Good evening, everyone. Mister Garcia, are you ready?
Yes, I am.
Alrighty now. Because I can't see my clock, but I think it's eight twenty nine.
Yeah, I have, uh, hold on. I have twenty nine.
Okay.
I have, now have thirty, ready on your call, council.
Alrighty, thank you, Mister Garcia. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This meeting is being called to order. Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to public laws nineteen seventy five, chapter two thirty one. This agenda is complete, complete to the extent known and was sent to the Trenton Times, posted on the first floor bulletin board in the city hall and filed in the city clerk's office. Formal action will be taken. Mister Garcia will call.
Certainly. Miss Caldwell-Wilson?
Present.
Mister Harrison? Mister Michelle?
Present.
Miss Vaughn? Miss Wilkins? Miss McBride?
Present. Tell Ms., um, tell Councilwoman Wilkins, she's very faint, can barely hear.
You're on mute, Councilwoman. Uh, there you go.
I'm trying to get the sound right. I can't get my sound right.
It's right now, for me at least.
No, it's, it is faint, but I'm.
Okay.
Um.
It sounds good now, Councilwoman.
It does?
Yes, it does.
Okay. Sounds good then. Alright, thank you.
Okay, I have one, two, three, four present at the moment. Myself, the clerk is, mark me as myself as present. Mister Kologe, will I have you on the line? Mister Kologe?
I'm present.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Kologe. Mister Adam Cruz? Are you present, sir?
I want to check, this is involving the township.
Mister Cruz, are you present? Mister Colin Cherry?
I'm present, good evening.
Mister Arch Liston?
I'm present.
Mister Bridges?
Present.
Mister Wilson?
Present.
Mister Douglas?
Present, good evening.
Mister Daniels?
Good evening, President.
Uh, Doctor, Doctor Lopez?
Good evening, President.
Ames, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Good evening, President.
I got to update that document.
Yes, you do, Doctor Ames. Thank you so much, I'm present.
Doctor Ames, good evening. Mister Anatari?
Present.
Miss Richardson?
Good evening, I am present.
Mister Lavenberg?
Present.
Mister Zalinski?
Present.
Right. Okay, Madam President.
Yes, I have, uh, one house cleaning item, uh, Mister Garcia.
Certainly.
And that was the resolution, um, for the Housing Authority Board. I had, um, had that put on because I had had a letter of interest, but I never got an, um, a resume to attach to that. So we need to, we need to take that off because the resume never came to me in time enough to put it up for the council.
Understood, I've removed it from this docket, or the one that I'm, the working copy I'm looking at now.
Alrighty, I appreciate that.
Certainly.
Uh, Mister Garcia, I just want to let you know Adam Cruz is present as well. Good evening.
Thank you, Mister Cruz, I'm Markius present. There you are. Do we have any, uh, for the moment, uh, forgive me, do we have any other council individual, council people who have since come on the line?
Robin Vaughn.
Mister Harrison? Miss Vaughn, thank you. Thank you, Miss Vaughn, Markius present. Mister Harrison, are you here? Okay, I don't believe we have Mister Harrison yet. Sorry about that. Go ahead, Madam President.
Yeah, so we, um, so we're gonna go, um, right into executive session because we have, um, a couple, I believe, a couple attorneys online, uh, waiting for the session, so you can read the executive session into the, uh, to the public, into the council.
Uh, certainly, uh, Madam President, I have a, um, actually, I'm just gonna ask for a motion to go into executive session. Uh, this is for litigation. We have the, uh, items here, Morelli versus City of Trenton, Elizabeth Cisco versus City of Trenton. Uh, do I have a motion to go into executive session?
Back in.
Thank you. Um, roll call, Miss Caldwell-Wilson?
Yes.
Mister Michelle?
Yes.
Miss Vaughn?
Yes.
Miss Wilkins?
Yes.
And Miss McBride?
Yes.
Motion carried. I will now create a breakout room for us to go into executive session. Please, uh, be with me one moment.
Asking IT to, um, post the executive session.
Mister Garcia, for the executive session, you could bring Mister Rashawn Williams, who's on here, in the executive session, and leave me.
In lieu of you, okay. Mister Williams, is there anyone else, Mister Bridges, that I need to invite that I should know?
No.
Okay.
No, uh, Mister, uh, Mister Valenti as well, but I think you know that already.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Councilman Harrison, present.
Mister Harrison, I'll mark you as present, thank you.
Thank you.
Did City Council go on executive session?
Yes, they did.
Thank you. I was on another call, so when I came in, it was quiet, and I'm saying, what happened? Thank you very much.
Okay, you also have minutes for approval, uh, for eight, uh, eight four twenty twenty two and nine fifteen twenty twenty two. So we're not asking for motions on either, we're just, uh.
No, no. Part of the consent, it'll be part of the consent agenda.
Understood. Thank you, Council President. Okay. Moving along. Moving to. Uh, we have, moving to reports, Madam President? Are we having reports, Madam President, or?
Yes, we have reports.
We have a raffle. I'm sorry, we have raffle approvals here for Saint Basil's Romanian Catholic Church, off-premise fifty fifty, and Signal Twenty Two Association, off-premise fifty fifty raffle as well.
Alrighty, that will be part of the consent agenda unless any council member like a roll call. Seeing none, it will be part of the consent agenda.
Got it. Moving on to ordinance.
That's a present, I think we have to approve them. Communications and reports and raffles separately, I'm not sure.
Yeah, that's what, yeah, we do have to approve them sep- oh, you, you saying that they can't be a part of the consent?
Right. They shouldn't be on the consent agenda, they're separate.
Okay.
So roll call for both, then?
Yes. The minutes, the communications and the petitions can be a part of the consent agenda, and then the reports could be roll called.
Oh, I believe the communications and petitions are separate. The, the consent agenda is normally resolutions. But you can check on that.
I think she's right. So it's roll call collectively? A roll call for these, thank you. Is that a roll call, Council President, or?
Yes.
Yes, it is, actually.
Thank you. Moving along to. Okay, uh, raffle approvals, we have a roll call ordinances?
There's a roll call for the ordinance.
Okay, moving on to resolutions. Uh, hold on one moment, I'm sorry. Resolution, moving on to resolutions for City Clerk's Office, resolution two two three nine four, resolution appointing Ken Wolfski to the Cannabis Advisory Committee pursuant to section one four six dash twenty of ordinance two two dash thirteen cannabis. Would that be a roll, would that be roll call or consent?
It could be, i- if no one has any, um, objections, it could be, uh, part of the consent agenda.
Okay.
Yeah, I have no objection, I just want to make sure that, um, um, I read the, uh, just, uh, um, I just want to make sure that it's noted, and this is a question to Mister Bridges. I'm happy with all of them going to consent agenda, um, but I want to make sure that the seat that each person is being appointed to, um, is noted, whether it was, whether they were appointed by the council or, or by the mayor. I don't think the resolutions reflect that.
Councilwoman, I believe it's on the, um, I, I believe it's on the, the fourth whereas.
Oh, is it?
Yeah, can't, Council President? Yeah, I'm sorry.
I, I would, I would appreciate it if you guys addressed this, uh, Chair Presiding Officer. Let's continue, um, Councilwoman Vaughn?
Yeah, so, um, Councilwoman Carla Wilson stated that it is there. My, my bad.
Thank you.
But I believe it's incorrect, that's what I wanted to bring your attention, Council President. It says, um, stated in ordinance twenty one oh seventeen, Trenton City Council will appoint two members to the CAC, and the mayor, the City of Trenton will appoint two members to the CAC. I think it should be five and two?
Yes, it should be five and two.
Hmm, all of them say the same thing. All of them say two and two, where it should be five and two.
Mister, um.
That's correct, it should be five and two, if we could amend that, um, if Council President and Council's will, we, I'd like to amend that on the floor, it should be five and two.
Mister Garcia?
Yes.
Um, would you, um, make that amendment for us, please?
I will, I will make the amendment in that, I believe it's the fourth whereas, is that what was note, what we noted?
Yes, the fourth whereas.
So we will amend the fourth whereas to correction of five and two, can we, can I get a little clarification for the two numbers, five and two, it's five?
City Council is five.
Five, five appointed by City Council, two appointed by the mayor.
Thank you.
Does it spe- I don't, I, I'm sorry, Council President?
Yes, go right ahead.
Apologize. Uh, does it specify which appointments are the mayor, which appointments are city council?
All these appointments, all the, all these appointments that are on their day are by, um, way of city council, the, all of them.
No.
No, that's incorrect. Mister Wolfski, Mister Ken Wolfski, he's, um, not the city council appointee.
Oh, I stand corrected, I, I, I thought these were all council appointments, but if, if we'd like to specify which one is which, I think we should. I was under the assumption this was all by, uh, these were all city council appointments. So if we could change the one for council's appointments to say as appointed by council pursuant to their five, and then the one, Mister Wolfski by the mayor pursuant to his two, I think that would suffice.
Yeah. Council President, I believe it should be, uh, done for Thursday. I mean, we can do it on the floor, but I think it needs.
I can, I, I can, I, I could, I, I didn't draft these resolutions, I, um, I, I, they came up to me and then I looked at them to make sure that they were proper, but I can work with whoever drafted them, have them amended by Thursday's meeting, to have them reflect which appointments are the mayor's appointments and which ones are council's appointments.
Yeah, I actually just.
Council President?
Yeah.
Any other change?
Council President? Hold, hold, hold up, there's too many people speaking at once. Mister, uh, Mister, uh, Bridges, you said that you could, uh, have these, uh, admit, you could, uh, fix the verbiage in them by Thursday. They would need to be sent up to Mister, um, they would need to be sent over to Garcia by tomorrow.
Yeah, no, I can have it sent back to Mister Garcia tomorrow, I, I, I wanted, I need to speak with Mister Garcia to find out who drafted these resolutions, specifically to pinpoint, but yeah, they could be done by tomorrow, that's not a problem.
Alrighty, now, Councilwoman Caldwell-Wilson?
Yeah, before you go ahead, the, the very, the, the last, no, therefore be it resolved by the governing body of the City of Trenton, no, there was. Oh, Mister Ken Wolfski is here, appointed by Trenton City Council as a member. I believe we already did the mayoral appointments, so these all, um, say that they're appointed by Trenton City Council.
The previous.
On the last line. On the last line of each resolution, they're already appointed because we approved their mayoral appointment already.
Uh, Miss Count, Miss Sonia Wilkinson has something I'll defer and recognize.
Excuse me, Mister Bridges, Mister Bridges.
Yes, Council President.
So, so, um, Councilwoman Caldwell-Wilson, continue.
Yeah, no, I was just saying that each one of these resolutions states down at the bottom their name, and they're hereby appointed by Trenton City Council.
And, and so, so, so council, so the council needs to understand that they only have five, uh, seats there, and so, um, the, um, the council can't appoint, uh, four more members, and we've already appointed two.
No, this is three. No?
If, if I maybe recognize Council President, just to provide some clarification?
I done got interrupted twice, and I was trying to make a statement.
Excuse me, I believe it's four here, and, um, I believe it's four.
Two have already been appointed.
Okay.
That is what I'm saying, that is four here now, and we've already appointed two, so this is, we, we don't have the authority to appoint a, 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 a fourth, uh, candidate, making it six. Uh, Mrs. Wil, Miss Wilkins, you may continue.
Thank you, um, what I was, uh, what I was going to state, um, from, based off of what, uh, Councilwoman Caldwell-Wilson stated, uh, but Council President, you did state that we already have two, Councilwoman Vaughn did, we already have two. Um, and Mister Wolfski is the mayoral appointment, and the other two mayoral appointments, the, uh, the voting failed, Councilwoman Caldwell-Wilson. So this would be one of the mayoral appointments, Mister, uh, Wolfski. I just wanted to clarify that, and then Mister, you know, Mister, uh, Bridges was gonna say something.
Need to speak up.
Yeah, I'm done, I'm done, Council President.
I, I, I was gonna, thank you.
Mister Bridges, Mister Bridges, could you seek the floor?
Uh, yes, please, can I?
Yes, you may.
Yeah, that was, I, to act what Miss, uh, Councilwoman Wilkins said, um, now with the understanding Mister Wilfski isn't the mayoral appointment, that would be his first appointment, um, under the ordinance, council has already appointed two, therefore they have three more, and the mayor has one more, so that, that, that's the only clarification I wanted to provide.
Alright, so we're, so we're all on target, we just will, um, um, clarify. Yes, he's doing it now, but as long as it's done, uh, by tomorrow, so, um, it could go out to the council and, um, be ready for the docket on Thursday. Thank you, Mister Garcia, you may continue.
Yeah, I'm Council President, I just make one note. Before we move on, um, very quickly, yes, just to summarize, yes, so, to date, we have, there's seven seats um, uh, on the Cannabis Advisory Committee. Uh, um, we have, uh, four, a- as of today, all of, if all of these get approved, which I think they're on target to get approved, council would have seated all five seats. Right? Um, the mayor is seating one of his two. Um, that means that there is a vacant seat, um, in which the mayor will need to appoint at some juncture. So I say that only to say if there's anybody out there in the community that would like to serve, uh, there is an opportunity, um, and they would also have to consult with the mayor, because that is his seat, and, but it is vacant. But the, but the four seats, the five seats by the council would be, uh, full. Um, and the one by the mayor, that's all I just wanted to say.
I think that was already clarified, but we may continue, Mister, uh, Garcia.
Uh, certainly, um, that would bring us down to Department of Administration. Uh, we are resolution two two three six nine, resolution exercising the option to extend the contract for an additional one year awarded to Capital Health Occupational Health Center for occupational health clinic services for the City of Trenton from September first twenty twenty two to August thirty first twenty twenty three, in amount not to exceed one hundred and sixty four thousand three hundred dollars per year, uh, CC twenty twenty, two, twenty twenty oh one dash oh two. Would that be for consent or roll call?
Uh, Council President?
There ain't no one.
Yeah, I'm Council President.
Yes, go right, go right ahead.
And I just, yeah, we can roll call this, um, I just want to, uh, get some understanding as to, um, when you say occupational health clinic services, can, um, uh, is this Mister?
No, 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 they could, they, this. Conference night, and you can get your clarity tonight.
Yeah, that's what I'm gonna do, yeah, yeah, yeah. So, um, I'm asking Mister Cruz or, uh, Doctor Lopez or whomever, is that, um, we, we talk about the lawsuits of the occupational health clinic, are, are they providing? Is this, is this, um, contract, um, has delivered the results that the city, um, expects? It doesn't appear to be, because we seem to be, um, increasing the number of lawsuits and the number of people that continue to get hurt on the job here in the city. So I just want to know, rather, this organization, Capital Health, uh, administering this contract for occup- occupational health clinic services. Um, I just, um, that's not clear on what are they, what their role is here, and what services are we, um, purchasing?
Madam President, I am ready to answer if you allow me.
Yes, go right ahead, Mister Cruz.
Uh, thank you, uh, uh, Madam President. This contract is for the purposes of procuring, uh, a service for when. Employees are, are being, uh, checked to, uh, for their physicals when they are being hired. And they are also the one place where we send employees when it's not an emergency injury. Uh, where we send employees to, um, to get checked up when, uh, an accident occurs, or they, or they're hurt. Or they're not feeling well, so that's what this contract does. The, uh, question was, do they meet the, the requirement, they actually do, because they. Their job is to actually be there when we need to send somebody over, and if not an emergency, they're definitely taken by ambulance, and so they are providing. The service when individuals, employees, uh, get hurt on the job, so they, they are meeting our expectations. As far as, you know, people being hurt, I mean, this is difficult, uh, we know we perform all types of duties in the city and. Uh, they, it is not their responsibility to look out for the employees. I mean, employees get hurt, as I mentioned, uh, doing any, any activity. Uh, or, uh, work, uh, in their job performances. But we are happy with their services, and, uh, you know, we have been sending employees there for, uh, for years now. We, and we do, for the record, we do advertise, um, we do, we do an RFP. Uh, last year was the first year for this contract, and we are now extending it to an additional year.
Are we getting any recommendations from this organization or from this contract for, uh, preventative type, um?
Uh, the, uh, councilwoman, that is actually a good question, that the, that is actually our. Um, our third party, um, administrator. Uh, that does that, and we actually have a, a committee that we have created in the city. Uh, to actually take a look at when people are injured on the job, and we sit down with the third party, as well as some of the other insurance carriers. And we sit down around the table, uh, we haven't had one in a couple of months. Um, but we, uh, we normally speak about the, you know, the injuries of the employees and how we can make it safer, and they recommend. Um, um, uh, strategies on, you know, what kind of training they may need based on the injury. And, uh, uh, but we do, we are actively doing that with the, uh, third party administrator, but this is not that contract.
Okay, thank you, thank you, thank you, yep, thank you.
Alrighty, so this could be a part of the consent agenda? Alright, you may continue, Mister Garcia.
Two-two dash three-seventy, Resolution exercising the option to extend the contract. For the final one additional year to Mercer Council on Alcoholism and Drug Addiction from September first. To August thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, to provide employee assistance for city of Trenton employees in an amount not to exceed fifty thousand dollars.
Is there any questions from the council? See, no questions, this could be part of the consent agenda. You may continue.
On Resolution two-two-three-seven-one, Resolution exercising the option to extend contract for the final one-year appro-. Uh, excuse me, awarded to Fairview Insurance Agency to provide health benefits for the city of Trenton's active. And retiree population in an amount not to exceed a flat fee of seventy-two thousand dollars per year at six thousand per month.
Mi- Mister, Mister Cruz, could you explain this contract, please?
Uh, yes, Madam President, this contract is actually, uh, for the services that are currently being rendered by Fairview Insurance. They are our healthy, they are our health insurance brokers. And, uh, what they do is that they assist the city with dealing when, uh, employees are having. Uh, issues with the insurance carriers, uh, we currently have Blue Cross and Blue Shield. And, uh, when employees have issues, uh, they actually reach out to the, um, um, to Blue Cross and Blue Shield. To the state to ensure that our, uh, you know, some of the concerns of the employees are being met. Uh, sometimes, uh, employees are denied services because, you know, something. Uh, they reach out to the insurance companies, uh, sometimes it's difficult, like to, just to give you an example. MRIs, uh, sometimes are denied very frequently, and, um, uh, that's when they get involved, um, uh. Um, and they are also are, uh, working with us right now as we speak on, uh, getting. Quotes from, uh, from the insurance companies right now, because the state. Actually, uh, the state health plan is actually increasing the employees, um, uh, part, uh, um. The cost twenty-four percent, and so, uh, we wanted to go independently out. And we are actually in the process of obtaining quotes from other companies. To try to see if we can make it, uh, more affordable for employees to continue to have their health insurance and not the twenty-four percent. You're very welcome, Madam President.
If there's no questions, um, this could be a part of the consent agenda.
Moving on, Resolution two-two dash three-nine-three, Resolution authorizing the contract to S H I International Corp. For the purchase of firewall equipment for the city of Trenton awarded through New Jersey State Contract Number N four oh oh two. Two-one dash T E L E dash oh-one-three-six-zero. From October seventh, twenty twenty-two to October sixth, twenty twenty-three, or until work is completed. In amount not to exceed one hundred and forty-nine thousand, one hundred and forty-nine dollars and thirty cents.
Is there any questions? If none, this could be part of the consent agenda.
Oded, thank you. Resolution two-two dash three-seven-two, Resolution authorizing settlement of a civil action in the matter of Elizabeth Cisco versus City of Trenton. In the total amount of forty thousand dollars.
This will be a roll call, Mister, um, Garcia, due to the nature of the resolution.
One moment, thank you. Okay, moving, moving along, this is a consent, uh, this will be a roll call, correct?
Yes.
Moving along, Resolution two-two-three-seven-three, Resolution awarding a contract through fair and open process. In accordance with NJSA nineteen colon forty-four A dash twenty point four at sec. To the Institute for Forensic Psychology to provide psychological screening for the Trenton. The Trenton Police Department for a period of one year from October fourth, twenty twenty-two to October third, twenty twenty-three. In an amount not to exceed sixty-five thousand, five hundred dollars, RFP twenty-two dash twenty.
If there is no questions, it could be added to the consent agenda.
Thank you. Resolution two-two dash three-seven-six, Resolution of the City of Trenton and the County of Mercer, State of New Jersey. Authorizes submission of an application to the local finance board requesting approval of a sewer bond ordinance of the city. Under the presi- provisions of the Municipal Qualified Bond Act, NJSA forty A. Colon three dash one, that sec, the act entitled Bond Ordinance Providing For Major Repairs To The Combined Sewerage. Pumping Station By The Sewer Utility Of The City Of Trenton. In The County Of Mercer, State Of New Jersey Appropriating Three Million Five Hundred Thousand. Therefore, and authorizing the issuance of three million five hundred thousand of bonds or notes to the finan- to finance the cost thereof. The issuance of qualified bonds under provisions of the act. And issuance of qualified bonds through the New Jersey Infrastructure Bank pursuant to the provisions of NJSA fifty-eight. Colon eleven B dash nine A.
Madam President, um, this is actually, uh, uh, we are requesting that this resolution be pulled. Uh, for some reason, the ordinance did not make it to this docket, um, not sure what, what happened. But, uh, uh, this resolution cannot be adopted without the, having the ordinance. So we are requesting that this be pulled from the docket, and we will present it at next, uh, at the next council meeting.
Alright, thank you, Mister, uh, Cruz, Mister Garcia, you have that?
Uh, yes, I have it.
We may continue.
Certainly. Department of Housing and Economic Development, uh, we have Resolution two-two dash three-seven-eight, Resolution authorizing payment. For a contract with Carroll Group Incorporated for Young's Road, Hamilton, New Jersey awarded in an emergency base. On an emergency basis for the demolition of fifty-three South Walter Avenue, Trenton, New Jersey, in the amount of fifty-one thousand, seven hundred and sixty-six dollars.
Alrighty, see, no, um. Yes, Mister, uh, Garcia, um. Alright, Mister, uh, Garcia, this will be roll call. You may continue. Um, this, uh, twenty-two dash three-eighty, um, I hadn't asked Mister, um. Mister Cruz to have, uh. Someone speak to this out of his, out of Mister Daniels' department, either Mister Daniels. Or someone from his department, Mister Cruz, is that right?
Yes, Madam President, so the, um, we've had discussions. Uh, Mister Daniels is ready, but I believe the person that had worked this was actually. Uh, Wes Bridges, along with the attorney from the requesting, um, uh, uh, agency. And I believe that they are ready to speak on this.
So who would be speaking, Mister Daniels or Mister Bridges?
Uh, Mister, Mister Bridges.
Okay, go right ahead, Mister Bridges. Is he on the line, uh, Mister Cruz?
I am on the line, but was, I'm, I'm sorry, what was the question?
Yes, um, twenty-two dash three-eighty, um, we had asked at the review. That, um, we speak to this particular resolution about a hundred and ten units. Of affordable housing.
Yes, um, i- is this, i- this is, wha- what's the specific question, council president?
Just explain what this, what, what the hundred and ten, where the hundred, hundred and ten units are, and what you're asking for here.
Um, I think, I think it's probably best, I know there's a, a council on the phone that, that, that had, or council on the call here that has specific details.
Mister Bridges, you were very clear in the review. That anything about anything on this docket would be coming from the administration, either Mister, um. Mister Daniels, or someone out of his department. Based on the fact that no one has a presentation listed for this. It has to come out of the department, so could we keep it to that as we discussed in review?
Uh, it, to the extent there's a, a, to.
Mister Bridges, yes, we've already discussed it at length.
Okay, so what, are you asking me a question or are you making a statement? I can, I don't understand.
No, I'm, 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 I'm clarifying what was discussed at review. That explanation for the resolution would come from either Mister Daniels or Miss Samuels, or someone.
So, so, but, I don't, I don't see anybody here, so, but the explanation is, this is the five hu- it, it, this, twenty-two-three-ninety. The five hundred thousand is coming from the already previously allocated two-point-eight-six-one million dollars. So this is not in addition to, these are monies that we're looking to authorize. From the money that's already been allocated to the city pursuant to the, um, ZAF fund, is that the explanation that, that?
Wes, no, I'm sorry, Wes, this is actually the one for the Brunswick, um, um, pilot.
That, that's what I thought it was, that's, that's what I started to speak about, and with respect to this, the pilot, uh, uh, thank you, uh. Business, uh, business minister Cruz, this is the pilot, there, there is a, um, transfer of a parcel of land. That has an existing, um, pilot on it as part of the work that's gonna be done to this. Um, there's, it's been looked at by the, um, planning board attorney, it's also been looked at by the city's, um, in- internal. Uh, real estate attorney with respect to the pilot and the appropriateness of transferring this. And the reason why I said, um, I'd like to introduce the attorney, um, from the entity who is, who, um. Can answer specific questions with respect to this, um, it has been looked at internally by the city's law department, has been looked at. By the city's planning board attorney, um, the, the, um, application is, is proper with respect to form and legality. Um, it's necessary to, um, uh, to finalize this project and to bring this. Um, redevelopment piece to rehabilitate piece to the city, but with respect to specific questions, I, I'd like to turn it over to. Um, the attorney, either Mister Johnson.
Mister Bridges, you don't have, you don't have the authority to do that.
Well, that's what I was asking you if.
Okay, so we, 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 see, this is, this is what the review does, we go over things that need to occur. And so you need to stay within those guidelines, we, uh, but anyways, um, Mister, um, Mister, Mister, um. Mister, uh, Cruz, we had discussed this at length, and, and the review, and we talked about. Um, the fact that no one was on for presentation, and that was made very clear to everyone. I don't know, was Mister Bridges in that meeting?
Uh, we were on docket review, Madam President, but, uh, uh. Yes, Director Daniels.
So, um, councilman, councilwoman Vaughn.
I'm here, council president.
Councilwoman Vaughn.
Yes, um, I, uh, I, I looked through this, and some of the information is not here, it's not transparent. Um, first of all, it should clearly state in, in the summary that this is a pilot. Um, that's being extension or transferred, um, but mainly, uh, I'm not voting for this. Uh, just on, uh, just on its face, uh, there's no such thing as an extension of pilot, and if it's a, if it's some. Land that's on there that they want to redevelop, then how come they have not come to the right channels to develop that land? Because we haven't gotten any proposal as to what they're gonna do with that land, uh, so it should not be lumped in this, um. This, this, uh, proposed, um, pilot extension, so that should be a, a separate and distinct transaction. So don't come here with a pretext of, um, of trying to get a pilot with, oh, well. With, there's a, there's a rede- there's a redevelopment piece on it, because everybody knows in order to get a pilot. You get, you get a pilot on the onset of new redevelopment, and if, if, if there's new reba- redevelopment opportunity. Um, on this property, then it should go through the proper channels. Uh, you know, the council has to review it designated redevelopment, you know, and come up with a plan. They're supposed to put a plan as to what they're gonna do with that land, if it's so, uh, that, that qualifies as a redevelopment project. But this, right now, this is just a pu- a pure, on my understanding, pilot and extension. And where's the value of it? How much are they asking? How much of a tax reduction are they asking here, Mister Bridges?
There's, they're asking for the same plan that is currently in existence, again, if there's specific questions, there is an attorney.
Question is, can you give me the?
Specific or specific, which one?
Number, the number, the number, what is?
The, uh, that's in the supporting documents, there's a certain amount of years left on that pilot, that.
Can you tell the public what those numbers are?
No, I, I, I can't, I cannot right now, but whatever.
Uh, Mister, uh, Mister, um, uh, Mister Garcia, can you put up the agreement of what those numbers look like?
I can look at what was attached to the resolution.
Alright, if it's not attached, then they need to get it attached. Can't, alright, so let's see what they have here.
Uh, you tell me when to scroll, uh.
Keep going, because I don't see the schedule, I wanna see the tax schedule. Not here. Oh, is it? Okay, here it is, gross rent, vacancies, gross settlement, X rate pilot, six-two percent. So they're paying a hundred and eight thousand dollars, and that's what it is? But still, that, that's not the detail, no, no, go back, you're, keep going, keep going, I just, I just wanna, looks like, um.
Wait, scroll is there, oh, sorry.
No, no, okay, it looks like it's, they're paying a hundred and eight thousand and one hundred and fifty-two dollars, uh. Uh, ye- annually for, uh, taxes, is that correct, Mister Bridges?
That is correct, but again, there are specific questions that I think if.
Okay, so, um, keep scrolling, Mister, uh, Garcia. So that's the only financial schedule they provided? Well, those are other bu- buildings that they own in other cities. Okay, so, uh, um. Okay, go back up to the schedule, I think that's it. Agreement for payment of lieu taxes, go back, I'm sorry, go back down. Yeah, payment of lieu and taxes, this one right here, what does it say here? Eight twenty-five Brunswick Avenue, and keep going down. Oh, go back. Oh, go back. It said thirty years, it says as of the date, okay, and sponsor all taxes. Uh the taxes shall not extend beyond the date of which the uh agency mortgage is paid in full, which is according with the HMFA law. It may not, may not exceed thirty years, when was this building um?
In eighty-three, nineteen eighty-three.
Okay, I I that thank you, Council President, and then, you know, I don't really have any more questions, uh I won't be voting for this, it 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 doesn't even qualify.
This could be on roll call, please, Mister um Garcia.
I have a question.
Uh Wilkins, but you have to speak up, for some reason, your voice is faint. I called on Councilwoman Wilkins and then we'll.
Um if she, okay, well, the Council President, this is my question. Uh my question to uh Mister Bridges or Mister Cruz or Mister Daniels, maybe Mister Daniels can answer. When was the original pilot for this particular property? Because I believe the property was actually built before nineteen eighty-two. The property, I believe, was built in the seventies, seventy-five or something like that?
Council President, if 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 I, please may answer.
We're not gonna keep going there, Mister Bridges.
Uh you, yeah, but I can't answer the question, there's. I want to just vote on it then, because if I can't answer the questions for you. And if I'm not gonna let them answer the questions, I can't inform you.
Mister Bridges.
Vote on it then, because you're not listening to the information that is here. I'm trying to, but you will not.
Because this is the, this is the, this is the, this is the problem.
This is a nothing, there are people on here who can answer your question. There are people here who are prepared to answer your question, there are people here who are prepared to answer your question. Every one of them, but you won't let them answer it.
Mister Bridges, Mister Bridges, first of all. Discussion in the review. Mister Bridges. It is a point of order when I'm speaking, Mister Bridges. You need to silence him if he cannot abide by the rules. You do that, you do that unprofessional. You act unprofessional when it's with Councilwoman Vaughn, but we, you and I. Miss Mister, you and I and Mister Cruz have a lengthy discussion in the review. Mister Garcia, I need him, I need him muted, and I won't ask you again, Mister Garcia.
Council President, I have muted him repeatedly.
This is Director Daniels.
No, hold up, Mister Daniels, hold up, let me be very clear to the public. This, the 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 people that Mister Bridges is trying to interject into this conference. Had an opportunity to come in and do a presentation. They chose not to do the presentation, they were given the green light to come on to do a presentation. At the review, Mister Cruz and Mister Bridges and myself spoke at length about that. When they did not come to do a presentation and they wanted to place it on the docket. Then, once it's placed on the docket, it has to come from the department head. Mister Daniels, Mister Samuels, and Mister Bridges signed off on form of legality. So he should be able to answer the questions, now today, he wants a presentation, which was not. A part of this docket. And so he cannot come here tonight and say, I want the law firms that are. Uh that ask for this to go on, because the law firms had an opportunity to come on and give a thirty-minute presentation. Prior to this evening, to council, uh uh the last council meeting, they have been given the okay. So Mister Bridges, we're not going to go back and forth with that, we're going to either have Mister Daniels uh do. Uh answer the questions from Councilwoman Wilkins or from Councilwoman Caldwell Wilson. Or from Councilwoman Vaughn, Michelle, or Mister Harrison or myself. So we can move forward, the the que- the the person that has the floor is Councilwoman Wilkins. And then Councilwoman Caldwell Wilson.
Thank you, Council President, my question um to Mister Daniels, when was the original pilot for the property? And I believe the property was built in seventy-five or seventy-three, if you can confirm when the property was built?
Mister Daniels, the question was to you about the actual um time. The property was.
Yes, ma'am, the property was originally constructed in nineteen seventy-one, I do not have the date. Of when the original pilot would have gone into, and I'm searching my documents right now, which is somewhat voluminous. Um to get that information, but um if Council uh Woman Wilkins would allow, I could surely have that. Uh to her tomorrow, when the original pilot, if I could, um council uh. Council President, I just wanted to note that this is, this property is one hundred and ten acres. What we're really looking to do and.
Unit, it's hundred and ten units.
Yes, ma'am, and while we're coming to you to ask you for this pilot, it's provisioned that HMFA, HMFA has required. Um uh and and to, for the petitioner to receive funding. Um HMFA is requiring this pilot insured. Um what we're looking, what they're looking to do is.
Counsel, he didn't answer my question, though, he said he was, I I wasn't done. I was, you know, asking about the original date of the pilot, but you went in to talk about the HMFA, I wasn't done. Because you stated that you were going to give it to me tomorrow.
Yes, ma'am, I apologize.
Yeah, I wasn't done, and the other portion of my question is, um the original pilot is expiration date. And you um you're coming tonight to ask us for an an another pilot. And you're, are you, is the uh the uh particular um organization asking for another thirty years? Or is it just the paperwork says up to thirty years?
It was a forty-year pilot, from what I understand, ma'am.
The original one?
The original one, yes, ma'am.
And so they're asking for another, okay, so, oh, wow, okay, so this particular, the next. Owner or the people that are purchasing the property, they're asking for a forty-year pilot too, or a thirty-year pilot?
I believe they're asking for a thirty-year pilot, um.
Okay, well, when you get, get me the information for the original pilot and what the original pilot, when it began. And when it ended.
Yes, ma'am.
Other question, the other portion of the question that I have if with regards to this property is if they were not afforded a pilot. What would the taxes be?
Understood.
Um I'm at, you don't have the answer, I mean.
Well, no, I, what, I don't have that answer, I I don't know what it would be if they're not afforded a pilot. I can tell you that if they are afforded a pilot at present, right now, that the taxes are seventy-nine thousand, uh some seventy-two thousand. Eight hundred and two dollars, um seventeen cents, if this pilot was approved by council. Um the new pilot, the tax payment would go up to one hundred and eight dollars, uh one hundred and eight, one fifty-two.
Okay, so the previous pilot was seventy-nine thousand.
That's correct.
Okay, so I I guess over the years, uh and then the new pilot would be one hundred and eight thousand, one hundred and fifty-two. But what I want to know, the two questions, so that you'll have it ready for Thursday, for myself and for the public. Is when did the original pilot start and when did it expire? And what 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 would be the taxes if the uh the new owners were not afforded a pilot? What would be the uh the taxes that they would pay to the city?
I'll have those answers, I'll have those answers to you tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Um Councilwoman Caldwell Wilson. Are you muted, Councilwoman? You're muted, Councilwoman. Yeah, you're still muted.
Yeah, well, someone muted me.
I was asking you to unmute, you happened to mute, I'm sorry.
Okay, um yeah, in the introduction, it does say payment of lieu of taxes. And, you know, I would just like to say something about this, because this is rehabilitation of all of those apartments. And many, I have been over there talking to the tenants, many of them have lived there for years, they like living there. If they don't get this pilot and they have to pay the full amount of taxes, the rents are going to go up. So this has, this, this will have a domino effect, so I would ask you all to read this and go over it and. You know, they 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 attached all the information that we need on that and um and consider this pilot, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman, so Mister Mister um uh Mister Daniels, I have a question. Is there, is there anything in writing attached to this, because I didn't see any guarantee of a renovation? Where is the language guaranteeing the renovation of any properties? I I I I searched the um, I searched the docket, Mister um. Mister Garcia, can you put the uh the backup information back up on the screen? So can can you just go through it, to sift through it, like quickly to see if um. If we see anything guaranteeing the um the renovation of the property? And so I I I don't see anything, any language in here guaranteeing the tenants. The uh renovation if a pilot is approved, um. I just wanted to uh to to point that out, um thank you, Mister uh Garcia. Um this can, this uh this can be uh put on for roll call and um with all the information that um. Councilwoman uh Wilkins is asking for and the actual language. Of a guaranteed renovations, if a pilot is received, if that is, can uh be shown to me. By tomorrow, I'd appreciate it.
Uh Council President?
So right now, so right now, this is on for a roll call.
Council President?
Yes.
Yeah, um I just want to add one thing very quickly, um I uh I just want to know, um. Can uh 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 what is his name, a doc, um Mister Daniels? And can he tell us what's the difference between a pilot and a and a tax abatement on home improvement? And uh building improvements versus uh, you know, uh construction. So there are redevelopment, uh there's tax. Uh incentives due to new new construction redevelopment, but new construction and redevelopment should not be confused with improvement. So if there are going to get, this building's going to get improvement, there may be some opportunity for a tax abatement. Uh but not uh a pilot, so I I, you know, I just give an example, um. I got a little tax deduction when I put up my uh new garage, new construction, it was new construction. But a lot of folks around the city make improvement on their homes and they don't get a reduction in their taxes. So I don't want folks to uh, you know, mince words here and terms. Uh so Mister Daniels should explain the difference between. A home, a building improvement, ongoing enhancement versus a a major. Uh rehabilitation or or new construction and development. So can you explain the differences, the different programs associated with each Mister Daniels?
I would just simply say this, Council um. Councilwoman uh Vaughn, that tha- that explanation actually exceeds my area of uh. Uh knowledge um or specificity, uh I'll tell you that uh Miss Samuels was working on this uh. Specifically, um because she had an expertise that um. Quite frankly, was pursuant to the tax taxing jargon um necessary uh to adequate, more than adequately. I don't want to explain it to you, but explain it to the public, and I don't want to confuse or conflict um to the public, um. Any subtleties and and many, in brief, um they're both uh uh similar. And that what we're simply asking for is that, you know, in in some ways, taxes be lessened. Um that the full uh boat of taxes not be paid. Uh in this particular instance, what I can specifically just simply say is, what we're we're coming to ask you is that. Uh as a requirement for this HMA uh loan that the petitioner is seeking. Um HMFA is requiring a pilot.
Well, I want to see that, uh I want to see that document that we're HF, I want to see the provisions of that program, Mister. Uh for for Thursday, provide that in your, in in your um deliverables for Thursday. The the document that has the provision that F, that what you just described, that HFMA requires. That a municipality gives uh a applicant a pilot. Because they're getting a thirty-year mortgage, I I want to see that provision, so send that to us as well for Thursday.
It's also on page two, ma'am, um of the.
Yeah, I I, alright, can we move, I want to see the provision of that document from HFMA, or I'll just go get it myself, but uh. I need you to sit, give, give, give that to us on Thursday.
Alrighty, so um if there's no more questions to this, um we can move on uh to twenty-two dash three eighty-one.
Resolution two-two dash three eight one, resolution authorizing application and acceptance of a brownfield impact fund. To conduct remedial action on Federated Metals Site located at three hundred Enterprise Avenue.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, what was that now?
This is.
Resolution two-two three eight one.
How much is this grant? How much is this grant?
We're applying up to three hundred thousand.
Okay, just, can can we put that up there, please? Can we just roll call that and put that up there, uh in in the uh? In the, in the summary, in the title.
In the title. Alright, we may continue to the next resolution.
Okay, hold on one second, roll codes, it said title to include grant amount.
Yep.
Thank you. Resolution two-two dash three nine zero, resolution authorizing City of Trenton to apply for an amount not to exceed five hundred thousand from the. Two million eight hundred and sixty-one thousand one hundred and sixty-seven dollars previously allocated to the New Jersey Urban Enterprise Zone. Authorities, ZAF, for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, for the Trenton Downtown Streetscape Project.
Is there any questions pertaining to this?
Um, uh yes, uh. Uh yes, um can we roll call, or who is getting, so you're gonna um um. Meet this thing, city applied to now, not to see, okay, so we're applying for this uh half, this half a million dollars, um. Uh who is, who who's, who are we, we got to put out a RFP for it, who's doing the project? Uh Mister, go ahead.
The city will, uh ma'am, will be doing the project, uh we will be putting out an RFP to an eventual uh bidder.
Okay, very well.
You may, um this can be a part of the consent agenda, there's no objections by any council members.
Okay. Okay, moving on, resolution two-two dash three-nine-eight, resolution authorizing City of Trenton to apply for an amount not to exceed two hundred and forty-four thousand seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars and twenty-five cents for, from the New Jersey Urban Enterprise Authority's Own Assistance Fund for the administrative budget for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-three, which funds are only available from the state for such purpose.
Uh, Council President?
Yes, go right ahead.
So, what, what are we using, what is the use of the money? What is, what is the money going to be used for here? The two hundred and forty-four thousand?
Administrative, administrative budget.
Yeah, but what does that mean? To do what with the administrative budget for fiscal year twenty-twenty-three?
Mister Cruz.
Hi, Ma- Madam President, uh, uh, the surface information I, I, I have and Mister, uh, Daniels can chime in with more in-depth. But this is money that is authorized by the UEZ Authority for municipalities to use for administrative costs, uh, that we incur while, uh, performing duties, uh, for the UEZ, uh, program. So, uh, you pay, we pay salaries and any other expenses that are incurred from that office.
So, so this is to fund the resources that support the, the programming, the administrative, how many resources do we have currently in the UA, in the UEZ office? I thought that was under Mister, uh, Daniel.
That, yes, that is correct, and that's why I asked if Mister Daniel wanted to, uh, uh, chime in, because he has more details than I do.
So, Council President, if I might?
Yes, go right ahead.
Presently, we have no direct support in that office right now, and as the gentleman who once, uh, was a long time employee, employed under UEZ program has recently retired, what we now have is two individuals, uh, staff in that position, um, working, uh, temporarily, uh, to keep the program going, uh, at present, um, uh, as denoted by the state, uh, UEZ Coordinator. The City of Trenton is the only, uh, municipality at this time that does not have staff, uh, staffing, um, the function of local, uh, urban enterprise zone. So, if this was approved, ma'am, what we would essentially be doing would be hiring one full-time coordinator. In addition to that, we'd be hiring, uh, probably a bilingual, part-time person to staff that office to do all of the sundry, necessary, uh, administrative type, uh, paperwork, um, that is, uh, involved in this. I would also say that the paperwork requirement is very similar to like CD, CDBG, uh, which can be voluminous and, um, UEZ requires, uh, accurate and prompt reporting of monies allocated and otherwise passed by council and spent.
Okay, so I would just ask, so we had someone who was doing this role for quite some time. Uh, and I, I don't think the function has changed. So, why did not, we knew that this individual was going to retire, because he had to put in his paperwork in far in advance. So, why isn't that, I would think in your budget, you, that slot and that, um, and that, that, that role has sufficiently been budgeted for? And we don't need any, I mean, why would you need any more additional funding for that role than it, than already exists and has been approved?
No, ma'am, um, that, that position while, while still there, and ultimately, we would hire someone for that, um, there are still other duties that, quite frankly, uh, are full-time. Uh, the difference here is, uh, and it's somewhat new, and it's quite frankly, it's new to me. Um, and that, in the previous years, this role, um, largely was not funded. The City of Trenton just this year was able to, uh, have two point eight million dollars extended to her.
Okay, so quick question. So what's the name of the role now with this two hundred, this quarter of a million dollars? So, uh, uh, so what, um, what role is this? This is like a director role, what level?
Ma- Ma- uh, Madam President, I just want to, uh, ask Mister Daniels, uh, there's an exhibit attached to the resolution. If maybe he wants to talk to that, uh, uh, Director Daniels, if you want to talk to the attachment where you have the salaries, materials, equipment, professional services, advertising, operating expenses, if you want to maybe make mention of that. Do you have that, Director?
Yeah, I'm pulling that now.
Okay, it's a little bit, i- i- it's, it's.
Yeah, it's, it's a little light on this copy, how, however, um.
This is upside down, sideways.
So, so it sounds like to me, are you expanding the department?
Essentially, we are expanding that department, that's correct.
Expanding department, so right now, it's been budgeted for one resource, which is, which is the individual that was, um, that re- that retired, right? And so has that position been put out, has been posted and put out to advertise and, and posted?
Not as of yet, because the budgets have not been, um, the budgets aren't final, not as of yet, ma'am.
Okay, so in that position is what level?
Salary range-wise?
Yeah, I mean, is, is it a director, management, supervisor?
It, it would be in the supervi- it would be a supervisory position.
Okay, um, so then, but in addition to that role, that's already been budgeted for, that one resource, you're adding a, an additional resource at the same level?
No, ma'am.
Okay, so, all right, so you tell me, I don't, I'm just asking. In addition to that one slot, that's now become open because someone retired, uh, and that's already been budgeted for, uh, I assume that, do you know what level, uh, salary that was?
Yeah, I'm looking for that information now, um, what I have is either light or it doesn't specifically spell it out even in my attachment, so I apologize, uh, Councilwoman Vaughn, uh.
Yeah, and I would like to see the qualifications for this role. Is this a, a role, since it's a state-defined role, is it on the civil service list or what?
So, essentially, the tier would be, uh, three-person department, if you will. A coordinator, which would be a supervisory position, then we would have what would be known as a project manager, which is specifically what you're asking, what does that role with, contain within what I'm asking for right here? And then there would be the clerk that I explained.
Okay. Right, so you're expanding the department, but that's not what this resolution says you're doing.
Well, wha- what we're doing is.
And you're, and you're creating positions, and those positions, I would think, and you know, Councilman, Councilwoman Wilkins is better at this than I am, um, you're creating positions, are, are they civil service positions, like, uh, what, like what?
Yes, ma'am, they are civil service positions.
But it doesn't say that in this resolution. Do we need to amend that you're expanding a department and you're defining new roles? You're creating new titles?
They just were, they, in this, in the resolution, they're just asking to, um, be allowed to, uh, take the money down, but they left out a couple of, of factors, so if he wants to address that by tomorrow.
Yeah, but this is major, in my, I mean, from my pers- I mean, if, if, if he, I asked him what he was using the money for. And he says, you know, to get help doing, you know, with the administrative budget for the fiscal year. And now, when I, when we drill down and you peel back the onion, he's saying that they're trying to expand the department and hire two more employees.
Ma'am, it's clearly spelled out in the attachment.
I know, but, but again, but what's not spelled out is that these are jobs that being created in the city. And that means that you have to, I thought there was a process to do that, that you have to go to the civil service lists and so forth and so forth. And, uh, and I will just ask, uh, thank you, Mister Daniels, but I would just ask, uh, Councilwoman Wilkins if she can help us understand what has to be done if, 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 if two positions are going to be created, and this is the money that's going to be used to fund those jobs.
Council President, can I speak?
Yes, go right ahead.
Um, I'm trying to understand what Mister Daniels is saying. I see the, uh, attachment that he's speaking, um, with reference to, for the budget. And it looks like that it's stating that ten percent of the total allocation, I guess, which is the two hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars, would be allotted for, is that the entire budget or is that for salaries? Because if it's for salaries, and you're saying that it's a supervisory position, because what I'm seeing on the attachment, it says UEZ salaries, um, within the scope of the grant is for a hundred and twenty-four thousand five hundred. And you're saying you're going to finance three positions out of that budget, Mister Daniel, is that correct?
No, that's not correct. What we're looking to do is finance two position, a proj- a project manager. Yes, ma'am, a project manager and a clerk.
Okay, so, um, what should have probably taken place is you're, you're saying that you're applying for the grant, but you didn't state what in specific you're using the grant for. You're saying administrative costs, but you aren't saying, um, and I have to defer what Councilwoman Vaughn said, you aren't saying we're expanding the division or the, um, the unit, I want to call it a unit, because it's not a division within the, uh, Department of Ha- of Housing and Economic Development, it is a unit with a UEZ. And from what I understand, that Tom McGow operated, you know, as the sole person, the coordinator within that unit within the Department of Housing and Economic Development, and I believe it's the economic development side, not a hundred percent sure. But as she stated, it should have been stated in the resolution more detailed stating that we're expanding this particular unit, and this is what we're going to do, we're, we're going to have a coordinator and, uh, a clerk. Now, let me ask you one more question. With Tom McGow's salary, was it a hundred percent UEZ funded, or was it partial UEZ and another part city?
I believe Tom McGow's salary was one hundred percent UEZ funded.
One hundred percent UEZ, okay. Okay, so then you're going to, you're going to bring back the position of UEZ coordinator, correct? Which I believe was his title, so then that will be posted for someone to sign up within the City of Trenton, right, so that an employee can be promoted possibly to that position, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And the same with the clerk title, I don't know if the title is going to be clerk or, um, another title, but I heard you say project manager. Is that a new title that we're, uh, creating under the UEZ unit?
For, for the effect of our conversation, it may not be project manager, it may be another title that would be commensurate to what our civil service language might be. However, from a project manager perspective, that would be the person that would do the next, actual be, if you will, uh, out, the, the subject matter expert, if you will. Um, actual, had, that would have actual oversight, if you will, the day-to-day of the, um, within the UEZ zone, um.
Over the coordinator? Over the coordinator?
No, not over the coordinator, yeah, working at the direction of the coordinator.
Okay, okay.
And, and with, and so when UEZ coordinators around the state meet, or uh, that direct reporting, direct, uh, conversations that happen, um, up to the state level, that would be the purview and the job of the UEZ, uh, coordinator, the actual, um, if you will, yeoman's work is done by the project manager.
Okay, well, Council President, I would, I would suggest we roll call this and have Mister Daniels, uh, send us this information tomorrow stating what they're going to do with the monies and how they're expanding the unit, because it gives more detail to the resolution.
And, uh, the Council President, just one, uh, one thing, if I may?
Yes, yes.
Um, yeah, and, and it's just very concerning, because with jobs so scarce in the city, and we, we talk about this all the time, Mister Daniels, is that, you know, Trentonians have been employed and city workers who work for the city, twenty and thirty years. And opportunities like this come up, and they're not made available to them. And you see people who, you only been here a year, two years, whatever, jump right into these very uh, good lucrative, uh, career-changing jobs. And that's concerning. So, if we're going to expand the, the apart- the department, I want to, I would like to see that job posted, that just from the gentleman retired, so that, uh, an employee in the city can, can move up and have some advancement. And we, and they don't have to file a lawsuit to get it, like we have seen over in the water department. And then, with the two new jobs, we want to see them defined and posted too. And to give, uh, people who've been here, who are eligible, and who are qualified, to have a chance at that opportunity. So, um, let's get this process around this resolution and let's do this the right way, in a fair way. Thank you.
Councilwoman, I agree with you, and what I would just simply say is that we will make those hirings and postings in conformity with civil service law. Now, thank you for saying that.
So Mister Daniels, I would like to speak to the other piece to this, uh, the UEZ, uh, funding and the, um, urban enterprise zone. So, um, I, I, I'm going to be in favor for this, as long as you, um, you know, make sure you post the, um, the, uh, job openings, and I'm going to tell you why I'm in favor of this. Because as I go down, uh, Passaic Street, and I know that Passaic Street is a UEZ zone, those businesses over there are about to shutter. We have a major, uh, uh, establishment over there, uh, that hosted jazz on Saturdays, while jazz, uh, the Arts End from all over the tri-state area. Their doors are about to close. The, um, the bit, all of the businesses down Passaic Street are, uh, they're suffering. And so I don't know what happened during the pandemic, that those businesses didn't get the help that they needed. I, I don't know, and I can't, all I do know is that they did not get any assistance out of the ARPA funding, they didn't get any assistance out of the CARES. They didn't get any assistance from this program that we're speaking to now, the UEZ funds. And that is a definitely a urban, uh, enterprise zone that did not get any attention. And so, the, I would support this resolution to bring on staff, because those businesses over there are about to shut down. And it, and, and the type of money that we were, uh, shelling out during the pandemic, and none of those businesses were assisted, is a serious problem for me. And so, that's why I would like to support this, to bring on the staff so that those companies over there on Passaic Street can get the assistance that they need, being in the urban enterprise zone. And that's just a statement that I would.
Council President, I agree with you wholeheartedly. Uh, I just want to, uh, let you know that I've been, had an opportunity, I don't want to say any names, but had an opportunity to be over talking with, uh, those business owners, and in fact, the Civic Association, uh, that run the entire block. Uh, we, we went out, we went over there, I know it's two businesses specifically, um, the, the one that, uh, enjoins, um, uh, hosting events that you just described. Another one, um, works with tires, uh, both of them, um, are up next uh, on our list, you're right, they are within the UEZ map, and I agree with you wholeheartedly, and uh, one of the, two of the items that we're looking, uh, to take care of will be taken care of post haste as soon as the weather, uh, lifts, and it's, it's much better. Um, so we will be doing that, we just thought that it would be prudent, if not in the city's best interest, that the items that we have up first, um, go to, uh, public safety, uh, with, um, a lot of those bricks downtown, uh, coming up from trees, um, growing, and, um, you know, public safety first and foremost. Even over on Passaic Street, public safety is a concern that, uh, my department and myself is worried about, so, uh, it's, um, it's on the list, ma'am. Um, and I can get you a articulated list of what we have planned, um, in the immediate future.
I'd appreciate that if all of the council could get a copy, um, I think that would, uh, be nice. Thank you so much, Mister. Yeah, yes, go right ahead, Councilwoman.
Yeah, um, yes, Mister Daniels, it's not a civic association, it's actually a certified business association. Because I worked with them in my first term, helping. Because I worked with them in my first term, helping them put that together. And and the Council President is correct, that street has been ignored. It took something like eight, ten years just to get the sidewalk repaired in front of the barber shop. That it was just disastrous. So um I too would appreciate them being on the priority list. When you've, when you hire these people and they go out there and talk to them. Because that is a very active um part of the community and those businesses do a lot for the kids and they have street fairs. And and they're struggling. So I would appreciate anything you can do for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
You may continue, uh Mister Garcia, please.
Certainly. Resolution two-two-three-eight-two, resolution designating Memorial Drive as an honorary Sarah Dash Way.
I think that I think that these should be all roll called, um but go ahead.
Yeah, oh yeah, no, no, yeah, yeah, yeah. Mm-hmm, is is there a supporting uh resolution for the street renaming?
Yes, I think there is a resolution for all of them.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay, very good.
Uh Resolution two-two-two-two-three-eight-three, resolution authorizing the additional honorary name Cycle King's Way to Bernard Street and Calhoun Street. Is that a roll call as well?
Yes, um.
Oh, roll call, the reading.
Yes, just to put the uh vote on the record, sir.
Okay, uh Resolution two-two-three-eight-four, resolution for of support. For the New Jersey Department of Transportation's proposed project entitled Prospect Street Bridge over Belvedere. Delaware Railroad abandoned in the city of Trenton County of Mercer State of New Jersey.
Excuse me, see, excuse me, I apologize. Yes, um seeing no objections, it could be a part of the consent agenda, thank you.
Okay, Resolution two-two-oh-eight-four, resolution authorizing amendment of Resolution nineteen-four-eight-nine. To reduce the transfer amount from fifty-three thousand seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars to um. To the amount of forty thousand seven hundred and forty-two dollars and forty-two cents and close out the Ferry Street project.
Hmm, Mister Mister uh Cruz, would you like to explain this?
Uh yes, Madam President, the the this resolution is actually uh once again on the docket. Because back in February, when uh we had it up for uh for a vote. Uh it was going into consent agenda. And um uh it it was it was determined by council that it was going on consent agenda. And when the, when we didn't have a clerk for those two months. Uh this resolution, when we came back to have the meeting, for some reason, this resolution was not added to the docket. The April meeting, it just kind of fell off the, fell off the face of the earth. And uh when we were uh a couple of months ago, when we were looking into this. Um we found out that uh we went through the records and we found out that it was never officially voted on. So this is why it's once again on the docket.
Thank you.
But but it is actually for uh it's it's a um money that was that was actually taken from. A project that was completed, it was, we had had made an original request of fifty-three thousand. Uh seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars, but when we completed the work on Ferry Street. We only ended up using forty thousand seven hundred and forty-two dollars. And because the transportation is very specific as to the money that we use, we have to be very exact with the resolution. Because they want accountability and so we need to put it on the record that it was not the fifty-three thousand that we used, it's only forty thousand seven hundred and forty-two dollars.
Thank you, Mister Cruz.
Thank you.
Um if there's no objection, this can be a part of the consent agenda.
Okay. Resolution two-two-three-eight-five, resolution authorizing payment for a contract with Ducon Inc. P O Box four-three-nine, Basking Ridge, New Jersey, oh-seven-nine-two-oh. Awarded on an emergency basis for sewer replacement at South Broad Street and Second Street. In the amount not to exceed seventy-nine thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars for the Trenton Sewer Utility.
Uh can we roll call that?
Yes, cap, um so.
Oh, yes. Uh Councilwoman Caldwell-Wilson, were you speaking?
Yeah, yes, um if this this was done on an emergency basis, why do we have an amount not to succeed? Shouldn't we have the actual amount of what the cost was? If it was done already? Mister Cruz?
Um hmm, um would you like, uh Mister Levinburg, are you on?
I, who who member? Yes.
Yes, I can, yes, Councilwoman, I can certainly speak to this. Um yes, the job is complete. And the not to exceed should be taken out of the uh the title for that.
Well, we we need, we need the actual amount.
Uh and I believe that is the actual amount is what we have there in the ordinance.
Yeah.
Could you just?
Just the actual amount, it it is not to exceed. I can I can expand upon that a little bit and then confirm that number for tomorrow.
Yeah, just just check the invoice, Mister Levinburg.
All right, not a problem.
Alrighty, and then um if uh if the invoice matches uh the dollar amount here. Then all we would do is um um have a resolution put forth that does not say not to exceed. Thank you.
All right, we'll have that tomorrow.
Yes, go right ahead, Councilwoman uh Wilkins.
Uh the issue I have with this emergency is that this emergency occurred in May. And I know that emergencies, when we're asking for funding and to pay on an emergency basis. It has to be within, I believe it's thirty days of the emergency. The emergency occurred in May. Mister McIntyre signed the procurement report in July. Which is sixty days later and now they're presenting us with a resolution in October.
Council President, if you would like me to speak to that, I'd be more than happy.
Yeah, you can. I mean, if you can, Council.
Council President, man.
Good, go right ahead, Mister Levinburg.
Yes, I appreciate the the question, Councilwoman. If you'll take note um of the memo, this emergency did take place. It started on May seventeenth and the job was completed on July thirteenth. That was a two-month period.
Okay.
Um I have to really, I I asked Joe McIntyre to be on this call and he can answer additional questions, but I I would like to say. Uh it was a Herculean effort effort on the part of our employees. Uh to take this massive sewer collapse, which was adjacent to one of our main transmission lines. Going through the city and be able to actually pump the sewage from the one side of the collapse to the other. So it was a two-month-long project. In addition, Mister McIntyre was able to go out and get. Uh three quotes for the job, which should be attached and I can certainly provide you with those numbers. Uh he got a great price from Ducon to do the work. Um it's fair to say that the there was another vendor, it was actually almost. Uh three times the amount of of what that work was to get done, because it was one of those jobs just had to be done. But the reason it took so long was the depth and the amount of work and the amount of shoring that went into this. But also the ability to transfer that sewage, you know, from one main to to a different manhole. So therefore, the residents and the businesses could stay in operation, otherwise the area would have to have been shut down in its entirety.
Okay, I can um I I I can go with the uh the two-month process. I don't have an issue with that. Um and emergencies do happen and I'm a firm believer that if someone performs work for the city, that they are to be paid. The only issue is is we're 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 tapping into um. Of a uh another another level, we're tapping into another area. When we take time to put these things forth to council, because I'm looking at the um. The Department of Community Affairs, the D C A report, and everything was done in August. And I'm just not understanding why you guys, why the resolution wasn't presented before October.
Uh this is Joe McIntyre, uh if I have permission to speak on this.
I mean, even if it was done in September, August, because we had one meeting in July, we had one meeting in August, okay? So then we began having meetings again in September, but it wasn't presented to be paid. But like I said, I want to reiterate for the record, I believe that when companies or organizations, anyone that's doing work for the city, they should be paid. But we have to follow procurement laws too. And we have to present and and give uh information to the council. So that it's done in a timely manner, because I know with uh emergencies, it has to be done um within the thirty-day. Period, time period.
Uh Madam President, may I speak to this?
Yes.
McIntyre, General Superintendent of the Trenton Sewer Utility. Uh yes, uh I I understand uh the Councilwoman's concern. The job actually wrapped up on July the sixth. And then uh after that, because it was an an emergency job, it takes the contractor sometimes a number of weeks. To get all of the costs together and to create the invoicing. So we actually didn't get the invoicing until uh sometime uh in early August. And as soon as I got that invoicing uh sent to me, we review it immediately. It usually takes at least a few days. On a job like this, it took probably more like a week to confirm all the all the emergency numbers. And then we put our documents together immediately and submit them. So um I understand that uh there is concern about the delay of getting this in front of council. But I can assure you, we do it as quickly as we can get the information together and and put it forward.
All right, well, D C A approved it. It looks like D C A um uh local government services approved it August twenty-second. I believe that we should have gotten it in September. I mean, but like I said, I believe in paying people for the work that they do for the city. And especially with the uh quotes, the quotes that the quote that the company gave was substantially lower than the other two.
Yeah, but we got a great price on this, actually.
We did, we did, we did. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh Council President?
Go right ahead.
I just want to add on to what 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 uh Councilwoman Wilkins stated. And this happened uh on another occasion, and I believe it happened with Mister McIntyre. Where the service provider came back months later. And then claimed emergency. Now, and I believe. It 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 it's just, it's it's just astounding that people just don't want to follow the law. Now, and then they come to the council and expect us to vote yes. Then if we don't vote yes, then they tell us that we're bickering and that we're not doing our job. Now, I ain't not breaking the law for nobody. And Mister McIntyre been around long enough to know better. So I won't be voting for this as a shame that this has come to light and Ducon been doing business with the city forever. They've been on rotation forever. And they know better too. So I don't know what's going on here. But I don't know what they're trying to sell, but this is ridiculous. And and I don't know what D C A is doing, that they're not doing their job as usual, as usual. So and they they need oversight, they need oversight. So everybody running roughshod, acting lawlessly. And then come here and try to tell us that we need to do, we need to pass this stuff. But I'm not acting unlawfully. And everybody here, Joe McIntyre, Ducon, know that, and then D C A. Know that this does not qualify to be paid under the emergency contract. They better come up with another resolution. But not under the definition of emergency. And that's all I have to say, uh Council President.
Can I briefly respond to that, Council President?
No, no, no. So um what I'm going to do is just uh ask Mister Cologi. Um if he could define the, we know that uh what an emergency contract is. But I wanted Mister Cologi to define when the payment has to be submitted, so the public will know. Um about the emergency payments, um because I believe the procurement law says it has to come before us. Um thirty days after the job has been completed. Mister Cologi, could you speak to this um for the public, please?
Council President, I've given uh the council several memos on emergency contracts. And everything along those lines. I'd like to review this matter and if I could give you a a firm answer, I haven't looked at this at all.
Um to look up the 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 laws pertaining to when the invoice should be presented. In the form of a resolution to the council to be paid out when it is uh deemed to be an emergency. Um if you could speak to that.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, we we already know um what defines an emergency. But now we're talking about the payment of that emergency, so.
Right, I want to plug this resolution. Mister Clerk, what's the number of the resolution?
Uh two-two-three-eight-five.
Okay, I'll have an answer for you.
All right, I appreciate that. Um Mister Garcia. Yes, if you could uh conduct the media, I'm gonna step away for a few minutes.
Certainly. Uh I'm going to guess this is going to be for roll call, moving along.
Yes, they already asked for that to be roll call.
Resolutions two-two-three-eight-six, resolution rejecting bids received for the furnish and delivery of. F O B of full circle bands, couplings and tapped-out sleeves for the City of Trenton Department of Water and Sewer. Bid twenty-twenty-one dash six-seven. If there is no.
Well, well, where's the dollar amount? What is this? We we, oh, rejecting, okay, no problem.
Okay, uh we'll put that on consent agenda, I assume. Resolution two-two-three-eight-seven, resolution authorizing the reduction of sewer charges at two-four-one Walnut Avenue. Account number six-one-six-two-seven-seven-nine dash three-oh-one, due to non-entry of water into the sewer service. Are there any objections to this being on consent agenda?
Um no, I don't have any objections, I'm sorry, Mister uh Garcia. I don't have any objections to it, but what were the charges? Why they don't have it in the um? It needs to go into the um the heading.
I'll make a note and have that.
No, 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 wait, 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 wait. Five thousand dollars?
It's four thousand and fifty-four cents.
No, it says reduction of the sewer, oh, this is, yeah. Walnut Avenue, I have it as five thousand. Oh, they broke it down. Okay, thank you, thank you, Councilwoman Caldwell-Wilson.
Okay.
Um. Wait a minute. Was there a leak? Was there a leak on this property? Can someone from Water and Sewer speak to it?
The the copper pipes were stolen out of the house.
Okay.
The copper pipes stolen out of the house, didn't go down the sewer, and we charged them for the water.
Okay, so the copper pipe, was this property abandoned?
I can't answer that question.
Oh, so. How do you know that, how do you know it was stolen? They have a police report?
We did an inspection. We go out and we inspect the house.
Okay, but how do we know they didn't take them out? You said they were stolen.
Joseph, uh.
Yes, I can uh I can explain that.
Thank you.
Yeah, um we have a program here in the city when there is a significant leak that causes exorbitant sewer charges. And it can be proven that the water did not go down to the sewer. You can enter into a program and we can confirm that, and if it is confirmable, then we will issue a sewer credit. In this case, uh the the people there explained that their the house was vandalized in between tenant occupied uh periods. And um the water had leaked uh down out into the backyard area and into the basement. A licensed plumber certified and and provided an affidavit to that effect. The Sewer Utility went in and did an inspection. Actually, I went in there personally and I took two newer employees with me. For training purposes and explained, you know, where the water went. And the the homeowners walked us through the property, walked us through the home and showed us um what had happened. And everything um was verified at that time and we approved them for the uh the uh reimbursement pending this resolution.
Okay, yeah, I remember the program, Joe, uh when I worked in Public Works, but okay, I understand, that does happen.
Yeah, I hey, that, you know, they got a sixty-five-hundred-dollar bill. That's being reduced by, you know, fifty-five-hundred dollars, so.
Right.
Yeah, it's significant.
Okay, that can, I mean, it could go on consent agenda unless no, um any of the other council members have a question, Mister Garcia. I I.
Did anyone else have uh, did anyone else have any questions pertaining to?
Yeah, I have a, I have a question um about this. So uh you know, copper piping, it's stolen a lot across the city and a lot of uh actually was um. uh, was epidemic of it going around, people going around taking copper pipes out of houses. So, why is this house getting, uh, uh, a, a discount? Is that like a standard, um, uh, um, a standard, uh, service that you give?
Yes, it is, uh, for active customers. A lot of the theft of copper, uh, historically has been in abandoned buildings that had the water turned off. So this was never an issue. But for a property that's active and, um, and there is a water loss, we offer this program if they can prove through the, uh, process that this in fact did happen.
Mm-hmm. It's just, it's just a, it's just a, uh, okay. Alrighty, thank you.
Alright, the Mr., uh, excuse me, Mr., uh, Garcia, you may continue.
Certainly. Resolution two, two, dash, three, eight, eight, Resolution Accepting a Bid and Awarding a Contract to Brave Industrial Bait LLC for the Mercerville Tank Improvements Project, a tank rehabilitation for the City of Trenton Department of Water and Sewer for a period of one year from August fifth, twenty twenty-two to August fourth, twenty twenty-three. An amount not to exceed one hun- one, one million, three hundred and seventy-nine thousand, nine hundred dollars. Bid twenty twenty-two, dash, four, two.
So this is, this is, um, the tank that I asked Mr., uh, Lavenberg to have some of those, uh, uh, that nine million, uh, dollars in bonds repurposed for. So, my question is to Mr. Lavenberg, this tank, we talked about this tank. Um, you, you told me that you were going to have the, um, nine million dollars repurposed for, for this tank. Whatever occurred to the repurposing of the nine million dollar bond.
Um, per your request at that meeting, um, you wanted the money to come out of the thirty-one million dollar bond for the, uh, reservoir project?
No, no, no. I wanted the, the one, the, the money to come out of the nine million dollars that was left over from the, uh, twelve million dollars in bonds that was, was scheduled for the first, um, uh, uh, project when we had the, um, under, uh, Councilman, uh, uh, when Councilman Michelle was the mayor, we had, uh, bonded out twelve million twice for the reservoir. And the, they had used a portion of it, and it was nine million dollars left un-repurposed. And I asked you about the nine million, specifically about the nine million.
We'll confirm that account, and that's where it came from. I believe we already did a resolution to change it. I, I stand corrected on that. It was, it was from the other tank project. We just added that in, cause it is applicable to the, uh, to the reservoir project. I can confirm the, uh, the account that is coming from tomorrow.
I, I'd appreciate it, because, um, you know, one, one thing that the public doesn't know, when we have these bonds out and the, and the bo- and the money hasn't been drawn down, and we don't repurpose the, uh, bond, the attorneys are still collecting fees on those bonds. And so, rather than to leave those bonds out there like that, we need to repurpose them and, 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 and utilize them. Um, and this one million dollars for this Mercerville tank, as I explained to you a year ago, should have been a reason to repurpose that nine million dollars and take that one million, three hundred and seventy-nine, uh, uh, dollars from, from that account.
Right, it was, it was taken from a capital account in the original, um, process with this, and we did allocate this to another account. I'll let you know what account that is.
Yes, I, I, I need to know.
I think the public also needs to know that we just can't repurpose any bond. It has to be specific for what the council has approved the purpose thereof.
Right, but the, but the, uh, but on your bonds, it says various, various reasons. And so, when you have a bond out there, uh, uh, for nine million dollars, and it's saying various reasons, and it was initially, uh, allocated for the reservoir. And some, and the reservoir.
Yep, um, that's where, that's where this fund is.
Occurred, we should be able to go back in and go to the local finance board to try to have those bonds, uh, or repurposed for, it's still for the use of the, uh, Water Department, but in a different area.
And that's what this is.
Alright, I would just like, I would just like to, uh, see where this money is actually, uh.
Not a problem.
Thank you.
Council President, are we roll calling this?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, Council President, if I could just add, if, if any council members would like to see a report, uh, the report done.
I would just like to see the, to see.
Well, they wanna see what it looks like inside.
Yeah, I, I wanna, we, we should be getting reports quarterly from you anyway, so. I would, that could still happen, but I still need to see, um, if that bond had been repurposed for it. Because we shouldn't be coming out of, uh, capital improvement for it. We should be, uh, drawn down off of those outstanding bonds because people are getting paid. Those bonds are out there, and attorney fees are accumulating when we could repurpose. Alrighty.
Uh, Council President?
Yes.
President?
Yes.
I, I, yeah, I just wanted to talk about, you know, with here, I'm glad that we're roll calling this, because I wanna, um, it, um, it's Mr. Lavenberg, is this one of the audit points on the NJDEP report? Mr. Lavenberg?
Yes, it is, it is mentioned in there with the various other tank projects that still need to be done. Uh, in this one, the reference was the one-inch hole that was, uh, on the tank.
Yeah, and, 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 but these projects have been referenced by DEP for years now.
Not to my knowledge.
Well, this is, this is, uh, this is, well, it's on your watch now, you should know that as well. So I don't know why you don't know that.
Well, I know that, I know this tank is definitely on the DEP's watch and has been on the DEP's watch for my time here. And again, I was here before this council a year ago to have this project done.
Right.
Well, you were here before you became, you were here before you became the director as well, under, under another company.
I was, I was in filtration, not in distribution, but I became acutely aware when I first came on board of the issues going on with this tank, the presence of legionella in this tank, the need for this tank to be done, and if you recall the report that I sent a year ago showing the inside and the interior of the tank. I think we could all be in agreement that the work definitely needs to be done.
Okay.
As soon as possible.
Okay, well, you know, um, if we can keep a director at the Water Department, we had one every year but since I've been here in twenty eighteen, before you showed up.
I've actually been here too already. Feels, feels like I just started, but it's only been two.
Now, uh, uh, again, uh, to what? To directors? Oh, okay, no, no, no. Uh, we have four directors, uh, under the mayor's tenure. And this is why, you know, some of these projects, uh, uh, don't get done. When you come on, when, when the next one come on board, they start at home plate again. So, uh, it's just been a ro- ro- of revolving door over at the Trenton Water Works. And you can't keep a director over there. We had Dr. Shea, then we had, uh, Steve Pico, then we had, uh, David Smith, then we had Jim. And it just goes on. You can't, you know, how can you run any department and the, and it's a revolving door for directors?
Uh, and I have to say, Councilwoman, I, I have to give the mayor some.
Well, again, again, I. I wanna talk about.
Department of Public Works, my apologies.
Okay, uh, you aren't to apologize, uh, all that, uh, you know, for being.
Oh, yeah, it's the first time that, it's the first time they've ever had a director at a cabinet level.
A party?
It's the first time they've had a director at a cabinet level position. It was originally, this was, department was run by the Department of Public Works.
No, no, that's not true, that's not true, that's not true.
Well, sorry.
Well, 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 again, when the mayor, Gus Yor, came in, he took the department out from under the department of, well, at the end of the day, it's still.
He did, he did.
It's still, it's still, at the end of the day, the, uh, Trenton, uh, depart- this is still a department, right?
It is, not, not the Department of Public Works.
Well, it doesn't matter, under department, it was still.
That makes a big difference, Councilwoman. It makes a big difference.
It does, it doesn't matter, because we had somebody, Joe McIntyre is far more, more qualified than you, and he ran both. So don't come in here talking about like you doing something special with your Mark Lavenberg.
I'm not doing anything special.
So I'm just letting you know, even when the Department of Water.
I don't wanna debate here.
All I wanna say is. That's right, yeah, I, I do. Like he the expert.
Thank you.
So, um, anyway, uh, no, I, I know, alright, go ahead and move on, but it's being roll called, right?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Okay.
Council President?
Yes.
I, I might just have one quick question, um.
No, we're, we're moving on from that particular resolution. We're going to two, twenty-two, dash, three, eighty-nine.
Resolution two, two, dash, three, eight, nine, Resolution Awarding Contract Through Fair and Open Process in accordance with NJSA nineteen, colon, forty-four, eight, dash, twenty, point four, SEC, to Ecologics LLC for permanent acoustical leak detection equipment and data analysis services for a period of one year from June first, twenty twenty-two, to June sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, in the amount not to exceed four hundred and sixty thousand three hundred and fourteen dollars and eighty-nine cents, RFP twenty twenty-two, oh, nine.
Council President?
Go right ahead, Councilwoman Caldwell-Wilson.
Yes, um, Mr. Lavenberg, this is from June seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two. We're, we're now in October, well, almost into October, yeah.
That's correct.
Why is it so late in coming to us?
Um. It, it was taken off the docket. We had it on the docket, and it was taken off the docket.
But you can, you, you can't backtrack the contract if you're going to.
Um, the, the vendor is willing to go with this. The critical portion of this is that it's being paid for with a grant. So, we, we can vote this up or down. If we vote it down, we don't get the grant money, we don't get the acoustic leak detection. That gives us advanced warnings when there's water main breaks and make up for the, for the account water, but I, I can't really speak for the length of time it took to get on, on the docket.
But if they have done, that, that, that's not the here and there, we're here now. And what I'm saying is that if they, have they done any work? Because they have, this hasn't been approved, so then the contract shouldn't be from June. Mr. Cruz, am I correct?
Um, um, Madam President?
Yes, go right ahead, Mr. Cruz.
Uh, thank you. Mark, is it, is it okay to change the contract so that it commences maybe October, uh, when, but upon adoption of this contract?
I, I, I can't, I can't definitely say that. We'll have to get in touch with the BPU relative to that. Um, but you know, this is, you know, this is the purchase of equipment. So, you know, you're giving it to your date. It's not a service, it's, it's equipment.
Yeah, but it hasn't been purchased yet, so why is it dated to June seventeenth?
Well, you would suggest that we have it dated till October of, of this year.
You, yeah, I, I mean, I'm saying that if you're going to. Mr. Lavenberg, if you're going to award this contract.
Right.
And it, nothing has been done, nothing has been purchased, then, then don't backtrack the dates, bring it up to date.
Okay, I, and again, I have to clear that with the BPU to make sure that we can.
BPU has nothing to do with the contract.
When they were, they were awarded the contract, this contract is old now. I mean, if it was, if, you know, I mean, if, if this contract was supposed to be from June seventeen, I think it's outdated. I, I'm, I'm not trying to bust your chops here, but this is a reality.
Okay, I, I like, Councilwoman, the best I can do is look into it, get back to you, and hopefully I can get back to you before Thursday with an answer from the BPU. But, uh, there, there's no, I mean, the BPU is just not gonna jump when, when we ask that question.
Well, Mr. Lavenberg, can you pull this?
No, it, it, look, we can pull it and just not take the grant money and, and not move forward with it.
Well, it doesn't say anything here about. It doesn't say anything here about the grant money. Where, where is it said?
As a component of TWW. Alright, if you read the memo, the, as the component of TWW's Unaccountable Water Program, TWW has applied for and received a grant from the New Jersey Board of Public Utilities for Acoustic Leak Detection in the amount of four hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. City Council accepted this grant on February of, uh, twenty twenty-two via Resolution twenty-two, oh, thirty-eight. The grant. The grant will be used for procurement, placement, programming, and monitoring of the permanent acoustic leak detection at three hundred and sixty hydrants, uh, located, but, uh, in portions of Trenton and Hamilton.
And was there a deadline that you had, you utilized this grant?
Yes, and I believe that.
What was the deadline?
I don't have the deadline in front of me, but I believe it's November.
I would like to have all the information, Mr. Lavenberg, because this concerns me, that this is taking so long to come to.
I, Councilwoman, I agree, and, and I, I don't pull things off, off a docket. This was submitted, I signed it off on May twenty-third of twenty twenty-two. A month after the council passed it.
Uh, Council President?
Go, go right ahead.
Uh, yeah, so, um, so when did, when did we approve the grant?
You approved the grant in February of twenty twenty-two via Resolution twenty-two.
Okay, okay, but, 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 um, alright, so I just have a question for the business administrator. So, uh, so the grant monies have been approved, they've been sitting in, in the account.
Not really.
Oh, I meant, uh, Mark, please.
We haven't applied, we haven't gotten.
Mr. Mr. Lavenberg.
Also, so you haven't gotten a gr- grant yet, so, uh, uh, call, uh, uh, Councilwoman Caldwell, I mean, Councilwoman Caldwell-Wilson, uh, uh, questions are valid then. You haven't even gotten a grant yet, and you won't change the date? So something's not right here. I, I agree, uh, that makes no sense. So, I think that it should be amended to, to change the date and, and make it accurate. What happened in the past happened, Mr. Lavenberg, but you still have to make your, uh, records accurate. And, um, it, it is inaccurate to say that the contract is beginning on June first, twenty twenty-two. That's not accurate. So it has to be changed to October, I guess, today, October the fourth.
Council President, I wasn't finished, um.
Go right, go right ahead, Councilwoman Caldwell-Wilson, I apologize.
Yeah, um, since there's supposed to be, and I don't know what the deadline is for us to utilize this grant, but can we do an amendment on this, on the record? And keep it on the docket?
If, if you're asking me, I'm gonna see.
So that it doesn't have to come back, so you don't have to bring it back for the next council meeting? Can, can, can we amend it verbally here? I'm, I'm asking the clerk or the council president? Change the dates?
I don't have a problem with the Councilwoman Caldwell-Wilson, but Mr. Lavenberg is saying that he can't change the date on his own. He stated that he had to refer back to BPU or, um, uh, someone else in order to, uh, determine whether he could change the date.
Well, I mean, can he find that out tomorrow?
He would have to find it out tomorrow.
But, um, Council President?
Excuse me, excuse me, uh, Councilwoman Bond, um, Council, uh, Caldwell-Wilson is still speaking.
Yeah, I mean, Mr. Lavenberg, can you put a call into them tomorrow and find out how we can correct this? Mr. Lavenberg?
My apologies, my apologies. No, I didn't hang up, I was on the phone with, uh, one of the engineers. The dates will have the dates changed, will be on the thing for tomorrow. The grant runs out January first, twenty twenty-three.
Oh, so you have time?
We can, we're gonna change the dates, and I'll have it ready for the docket on Thursday.
Okay.
I, I mean, there, there's no guarantee that this will ever see a docket again, so I, I'd like to get it done as soon as possible.
Okay, that's fine.
I mean, it's, it's, it's a grant, it's paid for, it helps us see if we have leaking orders.
No, I get that, I get all of that, but I'm just literally just looking at these dates.
Not a problem.
Understand?
Yep, not a problem, we got it, we're good to go.
Council President?
Go right ahead.
Um, the only question that I have with regards to this, uh, particular resolution is that Mr. Lavenberg is stating that it's a grant, but part of it is coming out of operating funds. So the grant doesn't cover the entire amount, and I thought that this C, is this C the capital fund, or is that the, uh, grant number? Because it doesn't look like it's coming out of a grant.
This C is the grant number. The grant is four tha- four hundred and thirty-three thousand and forty-four dollars. Out of the operating budget, uh, two, dash, oh, five, 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 zero, zero, eight, nine, nine, which is a general one, twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars and eighty-nine cents will be taken out of operating budget, and that has been budgeted in our budget.
Okay, so. But we, we, do we actually have the grant? Because I, I got mixed signals when you were stating that we haven't applied for the grant yet?
No, no, we have the grant, council approved the grant. Okay, we, we don't receive the money until we actually send them the bill. We have to engage, and then the money comes in. They just don't put money in the bank and say, go do it, you gotta. They just don't put money in the bank and say, go do it, you gotta purchase it, and then they get reimbursed with the grant.
Okay, so this grant is a reimbursable one, okay. All right, Council President, this roll called?
Yes, it's.
Okay, yeah, this should be roll called, okay, thank.
Okay. Resolution two-two-three-nine-nine, resolution authorizing appropriation and expenditure. Of one million, two hundred thousand from funds allocated to the city of Trenton under the American Rescue Plan Act. Of twenty twenty-one for the purchase and installation of flushing devices for the prevention of Legionella. Hmm, excuse me.
Council President?
Go right ahead.
Is, um, for Mr. Lattenberg, is this, this is different from the previous resolution, correct? Uh, this is. Where is this for? Let me ask you that, Mr. Lattenberg, because I see this is for the tank rehabilitation, because you may mention. That the tank has Legionella also? I heard you say it.
What we, what we are discussing here is in is part of our overall Legionella strategy, okay? And we have, we've identified over one hundred and seventy dead-end mains in the in the water system. So, uh, for people that don't understand what a dead-end main is, I'll just be very brief. What you like to do is you always like to put your water systems, connect all your pipes, all the ends of the pipes to other pipes, to create what's called a loop. Okay, that keeps constant water moving around the loop, so the customer always has fresh water. Okay, when you have a dead-end main, okay, the last two services. On the water main itself, and it can be a six-inch main, or it can be an eight-inch main. You can use water all day in that house, and you'll never use all the water in the water main. And that doesn't speak for the water that goes beyond the services to the dead end of the street. Um, we do have, we do have approximately a hundred and fifteen. Uh, flushers out there already on dead ends, but we've identified a hundred and seventy. Um, what we're gonna be doing here with this funding is, we we are using ARP funding for this. But I want to assure everybody on this phone call that we will be reimbursing that fund. On all the outside townships that are paying for that. I don't want any AR, we don't want any ARP money leaving the city for projects such as this. Um, we also have a situation in 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 Hamilton that is well-publicized in an area of concern. That is statistically having a higher rate of Legionella. Uh, and we found that in that area, there is a disproportionate amount of dead-end mains, and we think that that could be very well associated with that. So, uh, this is an effort to to put water main, or put these small fire hydrants at the end of these. Uh, water mains, so that every three months, we can send out a crew to flush out that water. Get out all the, all the rust and all the biofilm that's on the inside of a water main naturally. Uh, and improve the water quality for all our customers.
Okay, the only issue I have is this doesn't say, this says for the prevention of Legionella, so Legionella doesn't exist within our water system? In the distribution piece?
Legionella exists anywhere there's water on this planet.
Okay, I'm saying within our system.
With our system, yes, and it is, it is in our system as well. We've been working.
I haven't, I I wasn't done, Councilwoman, I haven't heard that that the Legionella was in the Trenton Water Works Distribution System. Um, because I am aware of the situation in Hamilton Township, but it's only, um, in Hamilton, it's not in Lawrence, Ewing. Hopewell and Trenton, so have they identified the area? Where the Legionella is in Hamilton Township, Mr. Lattenberg?
That is correct, it's located between the Merciville Tank and the White Horse Tank.
Uh, Madam President?
Okay, wait.
I'm I'm sorry, my apologies, I thought you were done.
No, so, okay, so it has, because I I heard you mention it with regards to the uh, Merciville Tank. But is that coming from distribution, or is that coming from something else with regard to the Legionella? Because if it's in distribution, wouldn't it be in everybody's water? With all the municipalities, because it's not within all the municipalities, it's only in a certain area.
So Legionella, the bacteria that it is, is a very, um. Not populous type of bacteria. And it can live inside a a larger, um, living being like a protozoa. Okay, where we deactivate it with chlorine, uh, and the Legionella can go by. There is an area of concern in in Hamilton, uh, associated with the Merciville Tank and the and the White Horse Tank. Uh, in that area, and there's just this, this, yes, statistically. A higher number that that warrants our attention, so it's a combination of, you know, is there stuff going on inside the Merciville Tank? And is there stuff going on in the dead-end mains that helps the Legionella uh, proliferate? Uh, in the in those environments, when you have water in a dead-end main, okay, you put chlorine in the water. And the chlorine will stay in the water for like two to three weeks, and then eventually. It just oxidizes everything around it and it dissipates. So when you have these dead-end mains, you will, you know, if you take a first draw off a dead-end main hydrant. You'll have no chlorine at all, so when you have no chlorine, that lets other bacteria just, you know, continue to grow.
Okay, so but I'm li- I'm listening to everything you're saying, Mr. Lattenberg, but you said that the Legionella is higher. In Hamilton, do we have Legionella anywhere else?
We have never detected it anywhere else, Councilwoman.
So it's nowhere, okay, because you said it's higher in Hamilton, so that means it is higher than somewhere else, so we don't have it. Within the other municipalities, only in Hamilton Township, and it's centralized to that one area, is it one area, or is it? Um, in other areas of Hamilton?
Just the one area.
Just the one area, because from my understanding too, um, Legionella, uh, you can get it from the water distribution system. Or you can get it from the HVAC system, so my concern is, is it really within our water distribution system and our tanks? Or is it something that's possibly in an HVAC system in the area of where it's concentrated? Because that's what, I mean, because you're saying it's a, these are preventive measures, you're not saying that we're going out. To do something with regards to Legionella, and I heard what you said with regards to the dead-end mains, but that is a general maintenance. That we do all the time within the city of Trenton, and that's something we've been doing for years with the Water Works. Those are maintenance issues, that's not anything specific to uh, Legionella, uh, since that's, you know, that's the subject at hand. So it it doesn't seem to me that it's a a distribution, uh, water system with Legionella in our water. It seems like it is just concentrated in Hamilton, and could it possibly, do you have the report of that, maybe that's something that we can look at? To see if it's something, um, uh, uh, that is within our systems, because we have nothing in writing, could you distribute that to the entire council? If you have that?
That is purvey of the Department of Health, the State Department of Health, of where those cases are. The Department of Health by law cannot give us the exact locations. They do give us cross-sections, uh, or cross-streets where the occurrences occur. Um, I believe they tested, they came out, and again, we've been working on this for two years with the DOH. Uh, Department of Health over in Hamilton and the DEP, okay? And the the the, they budgeted money this year, the DOH did, to go out and do fifteen residences. In Trenton Water Works System in Hamilton, in the area of concern. Okay, they tested fifteen homes, and they found it in twelve of the fifteen homes.
Okay.
Okay, now, they don't, they don't have HVAC systems, it's really just a showerhead. Or it could be a situation where the water heater is not high enough, if it's not at a hundred and forty degrees. Uh, that 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 could proliferate, but we didn't get that information because we don't go inside. Uh, people's homes to do that analysis, that was left up to the DOH. So in an effort to to do everything we can to increase water quality, uh, we're urging the council to pass this resolution to put. Uh, a hundred and seventy dead-end uh, fire hot or uh, flushers on, and the hundred and seventy is for the entire franchise area as well.
Okay, so you're saying this has been worked on for two years?
Two years.
And well, why didn't you bring it to council two years ago?
It's been in council many times, and we've we've we, the council's approved. Uh, a contract with Jacobs Engineering to do an extensive study. That run a contract with them.
Okay, so you've been here two years, you're saying that they've been dealing with this for two years, and nothing has been done for two years, Mr. Lattenberg?
No, we're constantly working on this, I I didn't say that at all, this is the, this is the, this is. Our most recent attempt to correct the problem.
Okay, so it wasn't.
Yeah, as a matter of fact, that 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 we brought this before council to do the cleaning and lining of all of Clockner Avenue, the entire length of that, I think it was like a two-point-two million dollar job. Uh, again, the bacteria can live inside old infrastructure, old cast iron pipe. Old cast iron pipe that has a lot of rust on the inside, it's very rusty on the inside. So, uh, Trenton Water Works has one of the best programs, and you know that from from working here, of our cleaning and lining prod, uh, projects. We're at about seventy-five percent of our entire system has been cleaned and lined. But a lot of the smaller mains, no, they have not been done, and and. And yes, we will have to be come back to to finish up this area in Hamilton to eventually clean and line it, but that's gonna take time. That's gonna take money, and this is, this is a solution that we can, we can again, address the water quality issues sooner rather than later.
Okay, and, um, I know that Mr. Cruz wanted to speak, Council President, whenever you ran down the floor, but. Those are my questions, and those were my concerns with regards to this resolution. But, um, in the interim of that, uh, Council President, I want to ask Mr. Cruz for a copy of, uh. I'm assuming maybe, uh, by tomorrow, for the ARPA funding, and what we spent, what our balances are, what organizations and businesses. And or individuals that we have paid, because this is coming out of ARPA too, and I heard that Mr. Lattenberg, when he said. He really doesn't want to use the ARPA funds, uh, there's something that's going to be reimbursed, I mean, I don't, I don't know, but. In the interim of all that, if we can get an admin's report seeing all who have been paid through our ARPA funds to see where our balances are. Before we make any decisions on spending substantial amounts of money on the, uh, on this particular project, and especially with our ARPA funds. So I'm asking that of Mr. Cruz to have that report to all of council, uh, so that we can take her, uh, and review it, so that we can make a, uh. Uh, decision on, uh, voting for the resolution, and I will want this resolution roll call, Council President, thank you.
Mr. Cruz, Mr. Cruz, did you want to, uh, say something?
Yes, thank you, Madam President, um, Mark Lattenberg, uh, actually. Uh, made a statement regarding Legionella, and I wanted for him to go a little bit more in-depth, which he already covered. Uh, however, I want to point out to the last page of this resolution for the one-point-two million dollars. That the last, uh, uh, be it, uh, that the last, um. Uh, the last portion of the resolution on the third page mentions that the loan amount of nine hundred thousand. Shall be repaid, uh, shall be repaid in full by Trenton Waterworks to the city of Trenton. By no later than December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. Uh, so of the one-point-two million dollars that we are going to use, because the majority of it is going to be outside of the city. Nine hundred thousand dollars will be coming back to the fund. Uh, when this is, uh, what, you know, when 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 this, by this timeframe, uh, next year. Um, I will make the, uh, the up-to-date amount, uh, uh, requested by Councilwoman, uh, Wilkins. I'll have it ready for council tomorrow as well.
So, Mr. Cruz, um, I I hear all of the, uh. Talk about the money being repaid, and, um, I'm still waiting for the reports. Where the emergency sto- snow removal money was repaid. Because we never got a report on that money being repaid, when we took that down to address. Uh, the urgent matter of the pandemic. So, when 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 you guys come to me and say, um, we're gonna pay it back. You know, I have some reservations about you guys paying back, because as of today's date, October fourth, twenty twenty-two. We never received any paperwork from the administration. Showing where you paid back the emergency snow removal money, Mr. Cruz.
Yes, so, Madam President, I believe I only made it, uh, I made a verbal mention at one of the meetings some time ago, but I will make sure that I get that number for you.
Yes, please.
Yes, I will.
Okay, so, um.
I have a question, Council President.
Um, in the meantime, this will, uh, still be roll called.
Well, uh, Council President?
Yes, go ahead.
I've been waiting, um, yes, I just want to quickly, uh, ask a couple of questions of Doc, uh, of of Mr. Lattenberg. So, um, this Legionnaire, uh, I I've been reading the reports out of the Department, the New Jersey Department of Health. I don't know this other company that you talked about that you that you've been doing a two-year study with. But, uh, can he share the results of that study? Mr. Lattenberg, can you name the company who did the study that you've been working with the past two years? And what the results were of that study?
Yes, it's Jacobs Engineer. Jacobs Engineering, it did go before council, uh, and was approved by council, the contract to do that study. I can find you the study with their recommendations from twenty twenty-one, again, we're we're doing ongoing studies as well.
But that's not what I asked you, I asked you, we we don't have a lot of time here, I asked you for the study. From the company that you've been, that you mentioned that you've been doing, uh, for the past two years, I want to know what the results of that study was. And can you summarize for me, what what are the results of the Jacobs study?
Yes, the summary, uh, of the Jacobs study found that the the flushing program that was referenced to. Uh, was not being fully adhered to over the years, and they felt that sometime in the last ten years or so, that there was a low chlorine level in that area. Um, and that led to the proliferation of Legionella growing in the mains.
Okay, now now you keep, now now you keep, all right, so so you're saying that Legionnaire, Legionnaire, Legionella is, uh, growing in the main. But, uh, the New Jersey Department of Health. Uh, gave Trenton Water Works a clean bill of health, it says that. Uh, uh, health officials are urging residents and business owners in Hamilton Township to take action. To reduce the risk of Legionella growth in their households and building plumbing. Recommendations for owners and building owners are available below. It can be possible for Legionelle to enter house buildings, including homes, when receiving treated drinking water. Health officials are partnering with New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection and Trenton Water Works to monitor. For Legionella in in the Hamilton Township Water Distribution System owned by and operated by Trenton Waterworks. While water supply, oh, let me get this right now, while water samples collected. At the Trenton Water Works Treatment Plant and Central Pompey Station have consistently shown. No presence of Legionella. Water samples collected from homes and businesses in Hamilton Township served by Trenton Water Works. Have identified the presence of Legionella. There is concern that Legionella may be present in other buildings and homes in the area. So. Now, now, the New Jersey Department of Health has cleared Trenton Water Works. So I don't know what Mr. Lattenberg is talking about here, and it clearly says that the New Jersey Department of Health. Has te- has tested those water samples in those areas. And has said clearly that there's no presence of Legionella, Legionella disease. I mean, uh, Legionella in in the water samples that they collected. So not in the Trenton Water Works Treatment Plant and not in the Central Pompey Station. So how though, how did that, how did Legionella, how did need, how did Legionella get into the Hamilton Township? Uh, buildings and homes? Uh, uh, the Department of Health is concerned, but has nothing to do with Trenton Water Works. So, I would suspect that, from what I know and what I've read. Is that it could have come from their pools, their 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 hot tubs and other situations. But how dare folks try to insinuate? And 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 put out rhetoric irresponsibly. Into this, into across the water system. And throughout the state, and misrepresent the reports of the Department of Health and Trenton Water Works to give people. Uh, a fear that their water supply is tainted, i- 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 is, uh, is, um, tainted. And and I, and I don't entertain it, uh, Council President, and 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 that's a horrible thing to do. Horrible thing to do. So, Mr. Mr. Lattenberg, I would want you to come here on Thursday. And I want a accurate report from New Jersey Department of Health, I don't want it from the engineering company. I want it from the New Jersey Department of Health. That they gave us a clear report, and they took water samples from these areas, and they said that the Trenton, the Trenton Water Works Treatment Plant. And Pompey Station have consistently shown no presence of Legionella. So something, I don't know what the political games folks are playing, manufacturing this, these scare tactics around our water supply. But it's not funny, and that goes for the people at D, D, New Jersey DEP who are political operatives. So they're not gonna play fair and and then providing unbiased regu- regulation, or regu- regulatory oversight. Over public water utility, they need to, they, there's some serious concern, and they need, and and their jobs need to be on on on. They need to, they, there's some serious concern and they, and, and their jobs need to be on, 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 on deck here. Because it's not funny, and we're not playing political chess with our water utility. So you show me that New Jersey Department of Health report and only, not your opinion, not these, you know, I, I want to see the New Jersey Department of Health. And if, 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 if you don't bring it, because I'm not playing no games, I will go and get it myself. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you, well, you're welcome.
Councilwoman, would you like lab results as well?
No, I, what did I, what did I say?
Excuse me, this is not, this is not a debate.
New Jersey Department of Health.
Certainly get you on.
This is not a debate.
I don't give, I don't.
Hello, this is not a debate, okay?
He, he needs to be muted, Council President, he needs to be muted.
This is not a debate here. Um, Mr. Garcia, can we move forward, excuse me, can we move forward?
Yes. Okay, moving from resolutions to, excuse me.
The second read, the second reading of ordinances?
Yes, to ordinances for second reading, um. Excuse me one second, I don't believe. My apologies, we don't have a second reading ordinance.
Okay. And so we'll move into public comment.
Moving into public comment, is there any mem- any members of the public, please raise your hand? Currently looking for hands as it is. I'm not, hold on, I'm not seeing any hands.
I'm quite sure, because the last time we had gotten quite a few complaints. If any of the council members could look and see if they see any.
Hold on a second, I'm looking, oh wait, I see here, okay.
Kira.
I'm sorry, I'm looking.
Young lady named Kira.
Okay. Miss, I see Sherry Garrett and Kira, okay, I see Kira, Kira said you first.
Yeah, Kira's first.
Go ahead, Kira.
Kira? Yes, can you hear me?
Uh, yes, kind of low, but we can hear you.
Okay, I'm fairly new to attending city council meetings, not a hundred percent sure how things typically work, but um, I wasn't able to catch the beginning of the session. Where can I find the recording and like the different resolutions that have been shared? Um, where can I find those after the meeting? Because I looked online, um, on the what, on, through the link that's available on the Trenton City Government website, but it's not up to date.
They ain't got it there, that's right.
Mr. Mr. Garcia?
Yes, uh, the link, the record, the link to the recording is, uh, is, is not provided, but the minutes will be provided upon, upon approval. Um, outside of that, the uh, resolutions, there should be pub- resolutions for the public, public view posted to the website.
When, when will it be posted? Because I, I see that it's, it's not being posted in twenty twenty.
In twenty twenty?
Yeah, unless I'm not, I don't have the right link.
Twenty twenty, um, I'll again check, um, check with the, with the individual that manages the website to make sure that the resolutions are being posted. Um, but they should be being posted after adoption and prior to, and prior to the meeting, they should be posted for um, public versions of the, of the meeting, uh, meeting agenda, resolution should be posted as well.
Okay, thank you, and then my last question is, so when you all are going through these resolutions, the only time that us, the public can comment is at the end like you're doing now? Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
For Tuesday, but on Thursday.
On Thursday, we can comment whenever?
Yes, on Thursday, we have a public comment, but it's always at the, it's always at the end.
Okay, at the end of each resolution?
Like, like tonight, if you went through the resolutions, then you would make your comment because we don't vote until Thursday.
Okay.
Hmm, if you have an opposition, or if you agree, that you could put it on the floor tonight because it doesn't get voted on until Thursday.
Okay, thank you so much.
Hmm.
Looks like the next hand I see is from Ms. Sherry Garrett.
Go right ahead, Ms. Garrett.
Thank you, Council President and the council body. Um, there's like, I'm, I'm sure you're aware, it's like three pages of communication petitions of civil action, foreclosures, claim, tort claims, and, and we're being sued. That's a, that's a lot, I mean, that's, actually it's uh, three and a half pages. Um, I wasn't on the call earlier, but I just want to make a comment about twenty-two, twenty-nine. I'm, it's a sale, I'm not sure if this is Lombard Alley, the one where the church is, but I hope instead of us selling that alley, we'll just lease it and they can use it because um, you know, I, I, it's much part of the down, that area, you know, of people um, 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 pedestrian using that area to get back and forth um, through that alley. Um, I'm a little disturbed about the um, Aene. I'm a little disturbed about the um, whole thing about the um, the waterworks. Um, I have been, um, I've had issues about these tanks that was uh, actually thrown on us by Department of, Department of Environmental Protection. And um, the tanks, like I said, you know, a lot of my concerns is coming out um, in regards to those tanks just sitting there. The excuse for us having those tanks was to push the water through the main uh, water, um, 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 the wa- Wayne water valves into the district, the different municipalities through Trenton. And as I stated, you know, those, it's costing us more money to maintain those tanks. Um, and to me, it was just a, a way of making Trenton Waterworks spend more money than they, they had to. So, um, I, I think that we have to reevaluate, um. I think she muted. Um, yes, I had, um, it's just, we gotta do something, it, it's not working. I think we have to get some biologists, we gotta um, find people right there on staff that can actually be testing the water, I don't know if, I really don't, uh, um, not sure if we have the uh, the persons who have the licenses there actually do that type of testing. I'm not really sure, I don't want to take away or add jobs that are not necessary. But we gotta step this up. Um, in, in regards to Hamilton Township, I don't understand why if the water is con- I mean, this Legionnaire situation is concentrated in Hamilton, why isn't Hamilton taking their American Rescue funds to pay for this? Like, why are we paying for that? And, you know, um, uh, as well as Trenton Waterwork has already borrowed four, four million, was it four million? Dollars for um, to uh, because of a lack of payment from COVID. I mean, has any of that money, part, partial of that money been paid back? Because I think part of it was a loan from the American Rescue and part was just a grant, a gift. Um, this money was supposed to revitalize Trenton. So it seems like that the, the large budget that we have, Trenton has, I don't understand the money, as I stated, when you look at twenty twenty-one, the um, the fiscal year budget and the transitional budget turn to transfer into a calendar year is three hundred, three hundred and sixty-six point eight million dollars, and we're still tapping into the American Rescue money. I'm just not understanding that. But um, not to quote on that, because I know I'm on time living on that. But um, again, with the bonds, you know, a couple of these resolutions for bonds and the uh, the, the, from my understanding, the bond uh, market beings are, are, and margin calls are being called back. And from my understanding, the bond market is not doing well. So I don't really know how that affects municipal bonds, but we really gotta look into that because we don't want to be caught out there. Um.
Ms. Garrett, I've uh, I believe you reached your time.
Okay, um, can I just wrap up one little thing? On twenty-two, uh, uh, twenty-two, three ninety-eight, um, the expenses of, I think you all are going to find that out from Mr. Daniels in regards to payroll and what that uh, that money will coming in um, and how that will benefit, but I think we need someone to actually go out there now. I don't think the businesses on the St. Street can wait until we get personnel and them up to speed to be able to allocate these uh, whatever the UAZ will provide far as them helping them get their business, them getting some income or some support. So I think someone needs to go out there like tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public wish to speak?
Yes, my name is, I'm on the phone.
Okay. Go right ahead.
Thank you. I do want to say that I have listened sporadically tonight due to circumstances, which I'm not going to get into. But I do want to say that of what I've heard, I am glad that the council is starting to come together and work within one another, though Ms. Vaughn needs to shorten a lot of her problems and stop butting in or as a person's talking, take such a break in between giving another person thinking it's their time to start talking, and then she continues on with her conversation. That's all, thank you.
Thank you, or are there any other members?
Is there anyone else?
Any other members from the phones? I'm hearing none and I'm seeing no hands.
I would, I would move to close public comment.
Motion to close, pleasure, is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, Ms. Colwell Wilson? Ms. Colwell Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Muschel, Muschell?
Yes. Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkins?
Yes.
Ms. McBride?
Yes.
Okay, motion carried.
Yes, I would like to um, make a motion to open a city comment.
Second.
Is uh, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Colwell Wilson?
Yes.
Yes, thank you, I just want to thank everybody for um, listening into the meeting tonight. Um, I think we accomplished a lot tonight, which is really great. Um, I also want to thank uh, the administration and the directors for being available to give us information. Um, and I don't have anything else to say other than everybody have a great evening, stay warm. Um, that's it, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman, Councilman Harrison?
Um, as you may be aware, uh, St. Francis Hospital is slated to be clo- uh, closing in September on September twelfth, I attended the only public hearing held in the North Ward. Uh, when I spoke out at the meeting, I asked that there be more public hearings and meetings with the community at a place and a time that was convenient for the residents and the business owners, so their voices could be heard. Since that date, I've had several conversations with officials from Capitol Health, and they've agreed to have another public hearing, as well as many several community-based meetings, starting with tomorrow night with business owners from the neighborhood. In addition, there will be a meeting with Villa Park Civic Association on October seventeenth. Um, they are looking for, also looking to use the high school for the next public hearing. Um, tomorrow's meeting will be uh, held at the uh, Latino Merchants Headquarters. So at the end of the day, um, people need to come out, they need to have their voices heard. It's the business owners, uh, people, the community. So at the end of the day, uh, please come out, yeah, like you said, business owners uh, speaking their, their mind, and the same thing for uh, the constituents in the community, we're working on that too in the near future. Alright, thank you, have a good night.
Thank you, Councilman, uh, Councilman Muschell?
I have nothing to say, thank you, good night.
Thank you, Councilman, Council, Councilwoman Vaughn?
Yes, um, I just wanted to run very quickly.
Councilwoman, you're kind of faint, could you?
Can you, can you, can you hear me?
It's better, it's better.
Um, I just wanted to speak about uh, uh, the ARPA funding and uh, and a lack of control around it and a lack of reporting that we haven't received. Uh, uh, there are some constituents who have put in Oprah requests. Uh, the council has asked for a listing of how the ARPA funds are being spent at another granular, gran- 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 a more granular level. So, we approved and, you know, some appropriations of uh, certain areas that the mayor wants to spend the funding, but questions have come up around uh, uh, certain groups. There was a, a Oprah requ- why is somebody interrupting me? Kathy, you should mute yourself. Council President? Council President? I'm not, I want my time deck, because Council President, you should mute yourself. Hey, Brandy, can you mute Council President, please? We're getting feedback from her line.
Here.
Okay, so um, so there was a, a Oprah request that was put forth by a constituent uh, asking uh, the administration how the ARPA funds were spent. There was a fifty thousand out, fifty thousand dollar allocation that went to a videographer and or photography vendor. And uh, and the administration refused to give that information as to which videographer or photographer received that funding. And we all know ARPA funds are public funds, uh, taxpayer dollars, and there's no um, uh, there's no, uh, there has to be full transparency around that funding and who gets it. And so we'll, we're gonna still be looking for that, that, that report from the mayor and uh, the finance director. Uh, the other thing that um, I wanted to bring up uh, is around the Trenton Waterworks Audit Points from the regulator NJD, DEP. I just think DEP needs to do a better job to start having uh, community forums and alerting the uh, the community on when there's regulatory issues or concerns. If these audit points are valid or invalid, or how old they are, or, or, or are they recent, etc. So we got to start prioritizing so that we can properly remediate them. You know, given a entity, an audit report in the eleventh hour and finalizing without ever even uh, think that they should engage us, it's just unconscionable. And um, and quite frankly, um, uh, not, not professional. Uh, you have to be able to work in uh, with your, collaboratively with your regulators, and regulators pull those type of antics, there, there, there's no trust and, 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 and nothing ever gets done um, properly. Uh, we need better oversight from the state, not just from NJDEP, but from DCA as well. Uh, and uh, and the alarms that, the alarms bells, the alarm bells that they set off around the water utility is just unconscionable, uh, when people, we, we serve a quarter million customers in, in, in Trenton Waterworks, and the people at Trenton Waterworks work very hard and they do their jobs well. And for our own regulator, along with the mayor and whoever other operatives out there to undermine that operating, you, you, that water utility is just unconscionable, and they should be ashamed of themselves. And to think that folks don't see what's going on is just uh, a, 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 another um, just to show just how um, bright they are, okay? Uh, not too smart. Um, and the other thing is, uh, and, and yeah, I do want that NJ, uh, the, the Department of Health report. That's the only report that's valid here. So don't come with anything else but that report. Uh, and I just want to say in general, you know, folks want to talk about the council. Tonight, like every meeting we have, we spend a lot of time uh, ca- ca- carefully reviewing uh, a docket. Tonight, docket had ten, you know, ten million, ten, the, the, the administration was asking for upward of ten million dollars. So when folks say the council does not do any business, we're not doing the city business, every meeting, we do the city's business. Every meeting, this, this docket is filled with, you know, um, uh, uh, expenses, taxpayer expenditures that exceed, you know, eight figures, sometimes nine figures. So this is the business that we do, and we take it seriously, and you all should take it seriously, it's no joke. Okay, it's no joke. Rather, we sit here and, 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 and folks want to describe our debate and deliberations and challenging some of these expenditures as bickering, then so be it. We, we will bicker until the wee hours of the morning if we can save you, the taxpayers, money. And we can say, we can prevent the city, the, the, our ARPA funds going out the doors with no accountability. If we can save you, your, your tax rate from going up on your properties and losing your homes, then that's what we're gonna do. Call it bickering, call it debating, call it deliberations, call it what you want. But it is doing the city's business, and when we end the meeting, we done spent, as I said, upward of eight, uh, eight figures or nine figures. Okay, so chew on that. Alright, so don't, don't think that a council meeting is just all fun and, and people can come here and just, uh, you know, uh you know, um play games because millions and millions of dollars are, are, are approved or uh um every meeting. Uh as far as St. Francis Medical Center, yes, any public meetings that we're having, they should be properly advertised. And they should be properly and officially facilitated and moderated. So if there are people out here, the mayor or any of his operatives are out here having meetings and having only a select few people join those meetings, those are not official public meetings. They need to work with the New Jersey Department of Health, the New Jersey uh Attorney General's Office, the Department of Public Health, of Public uh Safety, Law and Public Safety to have those meetings. So just come to this meeting and say, oh, we're having public meetings and having discussions about the hospital. Where's the advertisement? Where's the, where, where have you communicated that? This is not in the newspapers. It's not on social media. It's not posted through our city hall or the community. So here we go again, people grandstanding, political operations, to say they're doing something or not. We had a meeting on September the twelfth and nobody was there. Only a few people from the community. The mayor showed up at, at the end of the meeting and so did the Councilman Harrison. Okay, so I'm saying to Trentonians, this is serious. It doesn't appear that our, our county commissioner Sam Frisbee has voted for this uh measure and has sentenced quiet to remove acute medical care services out of the city of Trenton with nothing else available or accessible for us. And all our politicians from our Congresswoman to our state senator, to our assembly representatives, to our county commissioners, sit back and say nothing. And here they are talking nonsense about a water utility that has been uh 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 operating properly and without incident. We have eleven million dollars of surplus at the Trenton Water Works, but they wanna talk about some audit report of a, of a, of a tank or a cover that's been going on for twenty years. Where meanwhile, none of them are saying anything about funding that hospital and building out that hospital. None of them. And so I, I, I tell Trentonians, we have control and we could do something about that. Your elected officials should be over at that hospital, up down, up to that state house negotiating, making sure St. Francis get the funding that, that, that it requires to continue to provide the medical service that it needs to provide our city. And Capital Health need to continue to do what they're doing. But I hope that through the process of going to the New Jersey Department of, of Health and uh uh the Attorney General's Office, that that transaction is properly reviewed and vetted and ensures that it meets the criteria of the CHAPA Act. Because if it does not, then the court should not approve it. And everybody wants to go around here, a lot of folks are going around here giving that misinformation, talking about the transaction is already done. It's not done. They haven't received approval from the court yet. They have to go to New Jersey Superior Court to get approval under the CHAPA Act. And they have to also clear the hurdle at the Attorney General's Office in the Department of Health. And we don't, I don't understand how they can possibly clear that hurdle considering the socio-economic demographic of the city of Trenton. This city needs that hospital. If any of those entities want to play games with our residents, the ninety thousand population here, and not give us the appropriate access to health uh medical care, then I gotta tell you, I know some people in the conversations that I have had over the past two weeks, people are ready to stand up to this. So I would, and I, I would advise Matt Placken, Attorney General, folks at the Department of Health, to think twice before they send any report over to the, to the courts recommending that transaction to move forward. What we could do as a city and what the mayor Guss Yor should do, instead of keeping this from us for the past six months or who knows, who knows how long, he needs to go and, and do what an executive does, negotiate and get funding for that hospital like Raz Baraka did for the University Hospital up in Newark. And like uh a mayor, uh Castarfin did down in Camden, that one point or two billion dollars to continue to build out Cooper Medical Center, which is already a state of ER hospital. So where, what is Mayor Guss Yor doing? Running around here, being covert, not transparent and not doing his job. Yes. Kathy, please.
Your time is up, Councilwoman.
Okay, I, I, I get that. So.
Please, you're your time. Your ten minutes is up.
Well, we just gave Sherry Garrett additional seconds. I'm, I'm just gonna wrap up, please. I'm just asking you, allow me to wrap up.
Wrap it up.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. So I'm just, I just would like Trentonians to be, I will make certain that the official public meeting you are all aware of and is properly publicized and is not held at eleven o'clock AM in the morning where every, when everybody's at work. Thank you, Council President.
You're more than welcome. Councilwoman Wilkins?
Uh good evening, everyone. First, I wanna say thank you. Thank you for uh taking the time to come out to do your civic duty, to be here at the council meeting um and to participate and get better understanding of what's going on in our city. Uh first, I want to uh touch on the uh ARP funds, the ARPA funds, American Rescue Plan Act funding. Um I think it's important, um especially for what the funding was earmarked for. I, I ask people all the time, if you look around the city, can you tell that seventy-three million dollars hit the ground in the city? And most times the people answer is no. You can never tell that the seventy-three million dollars was here. It was thirty-six point five in the uh early half of the year and um I'm sorry, last year, latter half of last year. And then the thirty-six point five, I believe we received it in May. What's key is that can you tell that seventy-three million dollars in ARPA funds came to the city of Trenton and that it hit the ground running? I know that's a cliche, but you can't, you cannot tell. You can't tell based on uh the infrastructure. You can't tell uh they're starting to pave the streets. Thank God, I appreciate that. But there are things, there's so many things that are going on in the city that the ARPA fund was earmarked for, was even earmarked to help the residents. It was how, it was sent here to help the residents uh struggling to pay rents and to pay mortgages and to pay uh other utilities and things of that nature. But you cannot tell that the ARPA funds came. The ARPA funds were spent. I believe over half of the ARPA funds were spent. But we have not been abreast or been made aware of the amount, who it went to, where it went to, did it stay in Trenton? I know portions of it have. I know um a portion of it has gone to the employees, which was a very good thing. Because again, that helps the city. Anytime you put money back into your employees, that helps the city. It's helping the families. But there are other families also that were impacted by ARPA funds. I mean by, I'm sorry, by the uh COVID uh nineteen, but the ARPA funds haven't reached any of those families. So as I stated earlier, um I requested that Mr. Cruz provide a report to the council, to everyone, to all city council members. A report of the ARPA funds, where the money went to, which organizations, which companies, which individuals, that it was earmarked for and that was paid out. We have the ability, you can push a button in the admin system and it will tell us everyone who received the ARPA funds because it's under a specific account. The ARPA funds receive this own account because it doesn't go into the operating funds. It doesn't go into the capital funds. It doesn't go into trust funds. It doesn't go into the grant funds. It's a separate fund that's set up for specific things that are going on in the city of Trenton. So I, I want the council to have the report of that tomorrow. It's a push of a button. It doesn't take long. You know, as Council, um Councilwoman Vaughn has spoke, she spoke about um an Oprah request. I, I wasn't made aware of an Oprah request, but I, I'm listening. There's no reason why Oprah requests on ARPA funds can't be answered. There is no reason why it can't be answered. And I'm hoping tomorrow, once we have the report from Mr. Cruz, that the actual Oprah request can be answered. Secondly, I want to touch on the Trenton Water Works. With all the reporting and all of the uh news reporting going on uh in the city with regards to the Water Works, I know that there have been issues with the Water Works for years. Uh a- as an employee, I started at the Water Works. Um I do recall a lot of the procedures that uh went on with the Water Works through customer service, through our engineer's office with our superintendent, uh with distribution, our filtration plant and things of that nature. And what, what baffles me is that the Department of Health didn't say that we had Legionnaire. And I heard about the Legionnaire. But everyone else is saying that there's an issue with the Water Works because of this council. We have actually approved a lot of uh legislation to pay out and to send monies to um so that things are done and done in the right way. And, and so that the uh proper maintenance, the proper day-to-day uh activity and operations can be done with the Water Works. When we have specific and special needs, when it comes, water main breaks, emergencies and things of that nature, there are things that have to come to council. There may be some question, there may be some debate with regards to it. But for the most part, everything that was needed for the Water Works was given. It's, it seems to me that when the council doesn't approve what uh what is deemed, um I don't wanna say you for, for lack of a better term, I'll say the excess. Oh, you didn't approve this project, you didn't approve that project. But yet you don't give us information to be able to make the right decision and a conscientious decision to say, yes, let's do this project or let's do that project. There are things that need to be done in terms of repair. There are things that need to be done in terms of maintenance and we're all for it. Who doesn't want fresh, clean water? We provide water for several municipalities. We have a, a two hundred and some odd thousand customers. I believe it's sixty-three thousand ratepayers. I'm a ratepayer. Who said that we don't want clean water? Who said that we don't want the Water Works to succeed? But it seems to me that maybe others don't want it to succeed. And they wanna blame the council, but the council is not responsible for the day-to-day operations of the Water Works. And for years, there's been things that have been going on. Since I can recall, there, there are some a lot of things that have been going on since about two thousand and fourteen, maybe even prior to that. But for years, there have been situations where uh there were um urgent matters, but they were never taken care of. But for people to come in and say for uh other um uh elected officials to come and say that th- this council is the reason why something wasn't done at the Water Works is an, is an untrue statement. It's not the truth. So and the last thing I want to touch on is I wanna touch on the St. Francis uh Hospital. Um my hope and my prayers that the hospital does not close. I live in the same ward as the hospital. That is an acute hospital. It's a cardiac, a cardi- a cardi- a cardiac hospital. It specializes in cardiology with the heart. There are many people that use that hospital and need that hospital. You know, as, as legislators and, and people and decision-makers and people who have the ability to make the decisions and vote on various things and say, yes, something can stay or no, something cannot stay, we have to be mindful and to look at our own selves and our own lives. Things that affect us, we have to be cognizant of the fact that if that hospital closes because someone made a decision to say, oh yeah, close the hospital, there would be thousands and thousands of people that are affected in this city and it's not good. I'm hopeful and I'm prayerful that that hospital does not close. We cannot afford to have another, another hospital closed. Mercer Hospital closed some time ago. I was born in the hospital, in Mercer Hospital. That was, that wa- that was really not a good thing for the city and now you're talking about closing another one. We need, based on our population, based on us being an urban area, we need that hospital. So I appeal to anyone that's on the line, that if it's something that you can do, write a letter or states or make a statement or do something to state to keep St. Francis Hospital open for the city of Trenton. Thank you, Council President. I yield my time.
Thank, thank you. Um I would like to just thank the public for coming out. I would like to thank all of the di- the directors uh for coming on this call. And um I, I, I had a couple of things, but I, I, I know we, we can get out of here early. But I do wanna mention uh several things. The first thing is about, all of us has, has, has spoken to um the ARPA funding. Um what I would like to be clear on, I alluded to it and spoke on it earlier, earlier this evening, is about the UEZ zone and our businesses in that zone. I do not understand why that ARPA funds have not addressed the businesses in the UEZ zone. I do not understand how in the mayor's first report to the federal uh Department of Treasury, he stated that he allocated five hundred thousand dollars to the West Trenton Community Center. They never received a dime. They're still waiting. I do not understand why the ARPA funds have not been spread it around through this city equally. We had a business owner and we wanted to help her save her business. She had to shut the doors during the pandemic. They have taken her through the mill. They don't wanna give her the money to save her business. They came back and said, how about the city purchase the building? That's not what those ARPA funds were for and they shouldn't be used in that manner. I wanted to talk about the um it, it's just, it's just so much. Talking about the expenditures and how do we keep up with what is going on with the ARPA funding? First of all, they should have been giving us a report and they should not be saying that the water department needs a million dollars out of ARPA funding when the water department basically is supposed to run itself. It's supposed to take care of all of the needs. We're taking care of all of the other municipalities. And when you come into our city, you cannot tell that the ARPA fund ever existed. A hundred and sixty-three million dollars was in this city under the calendar year, six, changing the calendar year to a six-month calendar year. And the ARPA funding, a hundred and sixty-three million dollars. Where did it go? Why can't we have an account? And then they give us a budget that d- that did not include the six months, the six-month calendar year. It never included it. But our fiscal oversight agency never insisted that they included. That's a problem within itself for the residents and the taxpayers. And let us fast forward to the immediate concern about St. Francis. There is no way possible that one hospital can take care of or aid ninety thousand residents. When you go to um our current hospital, the patients in the emergency room are lined up in the hallways. the patients in the emergency room are lined up in the hallways. What, 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 what are we gonna do as residents in the city of Trenton to address this? Well, the first thing that we need to do is that we need to call on the governor. Need to call on our senators. Booker, Emenendez. We need to call on our Congresswoman. We need to call on our State Senator, Shirley Turner. We need to call on our Assembly Representatives. Because we're not just talking about jobs. We're talking about a cardiac care unit. Where would you move a cardiac, a cardiac unit to? The people in the city of Trenton don't have transportation to get to Hopewell. That, that is, that was the purpose of them moving that hospital because they wanted to change their clientele. They did not have our residents in mind when they moved the hospital to Hopewell. They left Mercer Hospital out there. It's an eyesore. And now they want to purchase St. Francis, which is under Trinity Care. And they want to tear that down. So they're not thinking about the population here in the city. They're not thinking about the hundreds of jobs. They're not thinking about the businesses over there on Hamilton Avenue and then that surrounding area. There are so many horror stories behind this hospital closing that we can't even, uh, speak to them on this call. So I want to just share with the public the initiative that I have taken for the hospital. I have sent letters out to every elected official in the state of New Jersey asking them to come into this city and talk to the residents in the city of Trenton and stop acting as if we don't exist. I've taken it upon myself with about maybe ten other individuals to host a rally on the eighth of October, which is this Saturday, right in front of the hospital, asking for Governor Murphy to come to Trenton. Not to, not to come to Trenton to talk about what the council was not doing, but come to Trenton and tell us what you are going to do, Governor Murphy, about the closing of the cardiac care hospital in the city of Trenton. The rally is taking place on Saturday, October the eighth at twelve noon. It's gonna be held at six oh one Hamilton Avenue. All of the businesses have been given the information and all of the residents that we can reach has been giving the information. We're asking that the governor steps in and stop the sale of this hospital because it's not a done deal and we need to shut it down. We cannot afford for people that don't have transportation to get from East Trenton to Brunswick Avenue. If they, if they don't have transportation to get there, that's putting them at a greater health risk. This administration knew that that hospital was closing and the question is how long did you know it? Because you only let the people know about two months ago. How long did you know that that hospital was closing? And so I say to all of the residents in the city of Trenton, this is not a political issue. This is a public health issue and we all need to rise to the occasion and get Governor Murphy, Senator Menendez, Senator Booker, Congresswoman Watson Coleman, Senator Shirley Turner, Assemblywoman Verlina Reynolds Jackson and Assemblyman Anthony Birelli. They need to come to the table and shut this down. If they can raise two million dollars for Cooper Medical Center, then I'm quite sure they can raise us two hundred million to keep the doors open at St. Francis Hospital. We're not gonna go away and this is, this hospital has to be saved because there's too much at stake here. I thank each and every one of you for coming. This conversation will not go away. It has to be dealt with. We have to save that hospital and we have to come out as a, as a community and let our voices be heard. Thank you again, Mr. Um, Garcia. I would like, uh, to make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Okay, second.
Okay, we'll call this Caldwell-Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Harrison? Is that a yes? Mr. Muschel?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkins?
Yes.
Ms. McBride?
Yes.
Motion carried, meeting adjourned. Good evening all.
Thank you, thank you.